Welcome everybody, thank you very much for attending. My name is Tom Hunt, I'm the leader of the council and I'm the Chair of the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. This is an extraordinary meeting of the Strategy and Resources Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and I welcome all members of the public who joined us today. There's no items that contain exempt information which would mean we'd have to go into a closed part of the meeting. The meeting is being webcast and the recording will be made available to view later on through the council's website. It's possible that Sheffield Live TV may also broadcast the meeting. We've received a range of questions today. Two sets of questions in respect of item five which is about the Race Equality Commission and the dwellers petition and over forty questions from members of the public in respect to item six about the local plan. Could I ask that phones are switched to silent and there's no fire test planned for today? If there is an emergency evacuation then please follow the council town hall staff to proceed to the exits. I'm now going to ask each member of the Strategy and Resources Committee to introduce themselves. I'll start with the elected members and then I'll ask the officers who are present to introduce themselves. So, starting on my left.
Councillor Angela Argentio, Chair of Adderham Social Care Policy Committee.
Thank you, Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing Committee.
Councillor Sahira Nas, Chair of Finance Committee.
Councillor Dondell, Chair of Education Children and Families Committee.
Fran Belbin, Deputy Leader.
Councillor Ben Miskel, Chair of Transport Regeneration and Climate.
Councillor Jolton, Member for Dunton Tully, Chair of Wasting Streets in Committee or as it was described in an AI-written article today, Chair of the Garbage Commission and Streetscape.
Sheffield Public Health Award.
Martin Smith, Chair of the Economic Development Skills and Culture Committee.
Thank you, Richard Bullioben, Member for Stanislaw and Chair of Communities Parks and Leisure Policy Committee.
Thanks everyone, Joe, congratulations on your new appointment. We'll go with the officers, starting on my left with Claire first.
Afternoon everyone, my name's Claire Taylor, I'm the Chief Operating Officer.
Afternoon, Greg Vell, Director for Public Health.
Good afternoon everyone, James Henderson, Director for Policy and Democratic Engagement.
David Hollis, General Counsel.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services, I'm the council's Chief Finance Officer.
Meredith Teasdale, Strategic Director of Children's Services.
Good afternoon, Ashwin Ali, Executive Director of Neighbours.
Thank you everybody, there's no apologies for absence and there's no items as I've said where the public or press need to not be present. Are there any members who wish to declare an interest in any items of business on today's agenda? Councillor Nas.
I'm not sure, I just need clarification, so I think some questions on the REC might come from Stand Up to Racism. I am a Chair for Stand Up to Racism, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you very much, right, so moving then on to public questions and petitions. And today we're going to separate the public questions and petitions into two parts to make sure that the flow of the meeting is better. First, we're going to take the petition and questions that relate to item five which is the council's response to the Race Equality Commission. Then we'll take the agenda item about the Race Equality Commission. Then we'll take the public questions about the item six which is the local plan. And then we'll take the item on the draft local plan, that'll just make for a more joined up meeting. And so with that in mind, I'd now like to invite the first set of questions to be asked and I believe they're being asked by Fatima and Sarah but possibly other colleagues as well. Hi there, grab a seat. Thank you very much for coming in. What I'm going to suggest is if you want to ask all of your questions and then I'll reply once you've finished asking them all.
Like all eleven at once?
Yes, if that's okay.
And we have different people wanting to ask different questions, so is it okay if we do question answer? I think that will be smoother.
Yes, we can do that, there's, I think, the reason I was suggesting that is that there's very detailed information that I've got in response to all of your questions and we'll make sure that's provided to you in written form afterwards. But in order to make sure that you got that, I just wanted to today make sure that you had a first kind of overview in response to all of your questions, so I think it would be probably better if you ask all of them and then I can respond and go from there, that's all right?
Yeah, okay, that's fine then. Okay, so what is the Sheffield City Council doing to hold schools accountable for the disproportionate number of permanent exclusions of black and brown boys? And how are you supporting children being sent to Spring Lane Exclusion Centre?
Question two would be, what are you doing to build trust between schools and communities? How do you expect to support the diverse needs of B, A and E students if you are unaware of the issues they face?
Question three, what do you consider discrimination?
Question four would be, what protocols do you have in place to report racial abuse slash discrimination? How will you address bias amongst staff who choose not to deal with or acknowledge race as an issue?
Question five, what is the Sheffield Council doing to ensure people, children of colour are supported in primary schools and given the right support to be tested for S E N D?
Just to add to that quickly, we also have a case in regards to a twenty-year-old young autistic adult. He has left school at sixteen with no secure post-sixteen provision because allegedly no provider in Sheffield could meet his needs for five years. He has been sat at home with social care, only getting involved two years ago. He has not had any education or skills provision for five years and the Education Department do not turn up to his TAF meetings. How can this be classed as fairness if this young adult has been let down by the Education Department and by Social Services?
How is the Sheffield City Council protecting black and brown people in leadership positions or encouraging diversity in leadership roles? Quite a lot of people in our community message us from nursing to teaching. And most of them are women of colour and they don't feel confident to work towards leadership roles because they know they won't be supported and they know all the harm it will bring to their life.
Hi, my name is Madeline and throughout my nearly decade-long tenure as an educator across various schools in South Yorkshire, I was frequently mistaken for a teaching assistant by school staff who were unaware of my position. These views are not only hurtful but also damaging as they imply that black, Asian and ethnic minority teachers are subconsciously not considered and associated to higher positions in the education system. If adults have these subconscious views, then I ask you to consider what message will black, Asian and ethnic minority pupils receive from the lack of representation with their education system? While it is beyond your control who enters the education system, it is within your power to support current black, Asian and ethnic minority teachers in attaining higher positions so that the notion that only non-POC can be leaders is challenged and eliminated. My question is, how will you use affirmative action to increase the number of POC in leadership positions in schools? And what are your targets over the next year?
How will you ensure this whole issue isn't just lip service brushed under the carpet?
Question nine, the resources for, people told me don't say BAME anymore, but black and brown communities in Sheffield in council housing is really low. What is the council doing to support these communities in their housing issues? And this question was specifically from families in Burngrieve that said they don't feel supported in their council estates.
Question ten, how do you plan to encourage more POC to join the Board of Governors at schools?
Question eleven, how do you plan on diversifying a curriculum that hasn't changed in ten years? Also, we've got one more question. So we read the report that you sent us from the last meeting and how will you go beyond the data to understand the POC experience? Because discrimination goes beyond data and it's an experience that we all have to face. And actually up there's all teachers, they're all young teachers that just graduated recently and they're all working in secondary school and primary schools. And they said when they report discrimination, if it's not an actual racist word that's said to them, it's just brushed under the carpet. And in the report, it was just facts and figures, but what are you doing to actually tackle the human experience?
Thank you very much for your questions and for coming to ask them in person. There's obviously a lot in each of those and so we will send you full written answers to every one of the questions. What I'm going to do is give a statement which covers the range of issues now and then that'll be followed up in writing. So I think it's important to say to begin with that in 2022, when the Race Equality Commission was published, we said that we would as a council not be afraid to change and adapt our practice and actions if impact is not felt or situations need changing. Whilst we've said that we've begun to implement the recommendations of the Race Equality Commission, that's what we're discussing in a moment, we know that the council hasn't moved quickly enough as an organisation and that the racial disparities identified by the commission still affect the lives of many people in Sheffield. I reflected on this after you joined us at the last Strategy and Resources Committee meeting and it's part of why I then spoke out in public to call for more to be done and for our work to be accelerated. The council is committed to culture change and to becoming an anti-racist organisation and the action plan that we're discussing today shows that there is more to do. By bringing it here and talking about it publicly and saying that we haven't done enough is a sign that that culture change is beginning to take effect. We're having this conversation in public with you so that we can be held to account for our actions. Large-scale culture change isn't something that can be achieved instantly and it will take time and effort but it won't be brushed under the carpet, I can assure you. You asked in your questions about how we consider discrimination. The council uses the Equality Act definitions of discrimination, including race discrimination, and that covers direct and indirect discrimination, harassment and victimisation, whether in the workforce or in our services. In the Equality Act, race discrimination can mean discrimination on the basis of your skin colour or your nationality. It can also mean your ethnic or national origins which may or may not be the same as your current nationality. This is used to inform our policies on dignity and respect in the workforce. But I'm not going to sit here and suggest that we simply understand discrimination as purely shaped by a legal definition. It needs to be shaped by lived experiences. When we see, when I read a recent report in the Sheffield Star which found that people who are black, Asian and from minoritised ethnic backgrounds are more likely to be targeted in police stop-and-search checks than their white peers, this needs to be informing how we understand discrimination. When colleagues tell us about microaggressions in the workplace, that needs to be how we understand discrimination so that unconscious bias is recognised and informs how we then are responding to that discrimination. So it's not just a legal definition. This is important because rightly you've asked how we will go beyond data to better understand the experiences of people of colour. Data, as the Race Equality Commission reported, is critical but is only part of the picture. The council has lots of data, for example, about our own workforce, but it's what we do with it that matters. Leaders in the council are expected to create time to hear from the lived experiences of colleagues who are people of colour. This is an important activity when we recognise that the council's own leadership is not representative. It's our job, all of our jobs, to make sure that the approaches that we take, the policies, the values we have in this organisation are moved forward and shaped by lived experiences, not just data. Data is information, it's what you do with that information that matters. An example of this is shown by the answer to your questions about Spring Lane, the exclusion centre and about permanent exclusions. Because the data shows us that there's a higher likelihood of being in Sheffield Inclusion Centre if you're from, if you're Roma or from a dual heritage background. We're looking at our special educational needs and disability data which links to this and this indicates as well that if you're from, if you're Roma or dual heritage in the inclusion centre, you're less likely to have an education, health and care plan than your white peers at the inclusion centre. We need to work with the inclusion centre to look in more depth at these figures. We need to work with education partners to commission this work and help inform a new citywide belonging framework and to shape our longer-term plans. That new belonging framework will be based on ensuring that children and young people feel that they belong in their family, in their local school, in their community. It needs to be evidence-based and we'll be developing this framework in the autumn term. This is only going to be possible by listening to staff and students to better understand their lives, their sense of belonging and the challenges that they face. And the colleague that you mentioned earlier on who you said has been let down, you know, we can follow that up and look at that particular case. This is an example of what I said earlier, data is necessary to help us to diagnose the problem but it's not sufficient to find solutions. Lived experiences and deep listening is critical to that. On exclusion though, just let's be clear, the council knows that it needs to do more to lead and work across the education system to reduce exclusions overall and to reduce the over-representation of people of colour who've been permanently excluded. You've asked about trust in the education system as well and we will be initiating a programme of work led by the Strategic Director of Children's Services from the autumn to ensure that school and children's community links are strengthened, that the needs of people of colour are identified and met. The belonging framework that I mentioned earlier on will provide a channel so that the voices of young people can be heard by schools and those working in the local authority. We need to build up our capacity so that we're able to do more listening to the voices of young people and to ensure that this is taken into account in the decisions that we make. We're listening to people of colour in school leadership positions as well as those who do not feel that leadership would be a safe arena for them. Our recruitment is changing to enable us to increase the numbers of black and brown people but we need to be much more representative of the city that we serve. These are just some examples of how we're seeking to become the anti-racist organisation that we're committed to becoming and to work with partners in Sheffield to make this an anti-racist city. Whether we're talking about education, whether we're talking about housing, very happy to follow up with you about the issues in Burngrieve that you mentioned or the range of work that takes place in this building. It requires a whole council response and we're committed to that. We'll send you full written answers to all the questions that you've asked and I would be keen to meet with you again, to listen further to you as would my colleague Fran Belbin, the Deputy Leader, who's organising for young residents of the city to take over a full council meeting so that it's shaped by young residents of this city. Thank you very much for coming today, asking your questions.
Can I just quickly add to that? I'm hearing a lot about listening and I don't think you're listening, I think you're hearing our complaints. I don't see action and frankly, every time we come to these meetings, there's new rules to restrict our speech, so how are you listening?
And also, we've brought up stuff that like councillors who are people of colour have already brought up before, like regarding the S E N problem of like black and brown boys not getting tested for S E N and they're just considered naughty kids and then like, we know we're not treated fairly but I know past councillors have already brought this to this room before. And you kept saying, in the future tense, we need to do this, we need to do this, but I'm not coming to any more meetings. Like shout out to the tree people, love you guys, but like, we have busy lives, we're not going to come every single week to tell you guys what you guys should be doing. And it's just, isn't it crazy though that there's a race meeting today and there's only like one councillor that's a person of colour here? Two, oh sorry, yeah, like there's only two out of... I wasn't, you went in my eyes, I was looking this way. But like, don't you think that's a bit problematic in itself?
And there's so many issues and the fact we have three minutes, three minutes and I've had ten seconds to explain an issue that's gone on for five years with that case that we know, that autistic boy. He's been neglected and I want to specifically call out Dondale and Meredith Teasdale as, you know, leaders of education. I want to see action, like it's really heartbreaking and I want to let everyone in the council know it's not fair for you guys to come and say, you have three minutes, three minutes to describe the issues of teachers, three minutes to describe the issues of students, head teachers, you know, the public and it's just not good enough. And I just want to see action from now, it's really sad.
And you guys have been having these meetings, well, every week for the past twenty years. And like, when we speak, we've been speaking to quite a lot of people in the community, like older teachers, older councillors and they said they've been fighting for the same thing twenty years ago. And they said it's refreshing to see young people come fight but like, they just wonder, it's like, no change is going to come. Because even when you guys leave your position, someone's going to come in and then it's just going to go backwards again, do you know what I mean? It's just not good enough and I hope...
Also, I'd like to add that you've already received these questions but I don't feel like these questions have been fully answered. So one of my key questions, what are your targets over the next year? So you've explained that you understand our issues, our concerns, but you haven't explained the steps that you're going to be taking or the targets that you put in place.
And how do you even measure these targets? Because I know you guys aren't going directly to the community to talk to the people because if, when we came like last month to our first meeting, we didn't even know it was possible for the community to come here.
Okay. We, we know that this isn't the ideal format to have these kinds of deeper conversations that are required which is why I'd be keen, as would my colleague Fran and others, to have a fuller conversation with you. There will be full answers to your questions and I think Fran, did you want to just, okay, go on.
If I can just add in that we've just, we are establishing a task and finish group precisely about public questions so that they work better for people who come and ask questions and lots of other ways actually for the ways that people can engage with the council. We'll be having a, the first session of that task and finish group on public questions will be a session where we're inviting members of the public to come in and feedback to us on it. So I really hope that you'll be able to participate in that. We're scheduling a date that will be in September and I'd really like you to participate in that if you can. And then we will be doing a much wider piece of work which is about how we have these conversations with residents both here at the town hall but also out in our communities. Totally accept that we need to do better at it, we need to make better use of technology as well so it's not constantly about people having to come to the town hall to ask questions and we need to do a lot more around engagement in that way. And as Tom had said, be really happy to meet with you and have a long discussion around that as well.
Do you want us to come to another town hall meeting in September to repeat the exact same questions we've been saying for the last three meetings?
Happy to come to you, to meet with you first, but...
We do have other questions that people are asking today, so we will have, if you're happy to, we'd be keen to have that further conversation with you. But the challenge that you are posing to all of us here today, this whole organisation, is part of why we are having in a minute a full discussion about an action plan because for meeting the recommendations of the Race Equality Commission, we know we need to do more. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you guys, but we want to just say, like, talk to the community, listen, don't just hear us out, listen and show action. And if you can talk to the press, you can talk to us.
I know, and also we've kind of like given, like we've given up now because we came to three meetings and you guys just keep disregarding us, so like, what's the point coming back? You can have the community meeting on September but I doubt anyone from the community will come.
We just don't want to be here.
Maybe you guys should go to the community instead.
Instead of showing us and expecting us to come out and argue every single meeting.
Yeah, we can give you a list of community centres in Sheffield that you can directly talk to because that's who we got our questions from, across Burngrieve, Upper Thaw, like you guys can go directly to them.
Let's do that, thank you. Okay, I think we have Olivier. Hi. Hi, so Olivier, do you want to just introduce yourself because you're asking a question on behalf of the organisation, is that right? Yeah, do you want to just press the button on there and it will turn the mic on?
Yep, that's it, yeah. Thank you, thank you. My name is Olivier Timo and I'm the Chief Exec of Sadaka, the Sheffield and District African Caribbean Community Association. I also co-chair the Sheffield Culture Consortium and also co-chair the Voluntary and Community Sector Leaders Forum. Having finished to introduce myself, I will have to say I was also a former commissioner on the Sheffield Race Equality Commission. In fact, I initiated the commission. Since the commission report publication on the fourteenth of July last year, the leadership of the council recognised that there has been slow progress on implementing all the recommendations. It is an observation that's also shared by the community and many other key stakeholders. What the community want to hear from the leadership of the council is why has it been a slow progress in implementing the recommendation? From me personally, if I wanted to solve the issue, having seen your initial action plan, I found it very fuzzy, very complex, too long and not concise. Then my advice to the leadership here and to the committee is rather than an action plan, what need to do is act now by implementing, by actually drafting a rapid improvement plan because you've got the data from the Race Equality Commission. The finding is there, you all know the starting point of where the underserved community are coming from. From there, we need to elevate those communities and we need to urgently elevate them. Then it is a rapid improvement plan that need to be drafted and shared with community. Key anchor organisations, community sectors need to view those plans. That's the first question that I'm asking the committee to do. We all know as well that a recommendation coming from the Race Equality Commission, what is needed to actually solve those recommendations is finance, it's the money. Then I'm asking this committee, having witnessed the last two budget and not seeing anything going to community when it comes to Race Equality Commission, then I would like the committee here to actually vote on an emergency budget. That's the resources that will solve the rapid improvement plan. Those two paper, the community want to see them. That's the only way I can see the community and the council closing that trust gap. A rapid improvement plan, an emergency budget to tackle the key recommendation, is this possible?
Thank you very much. The plan, the action plan was published in December 2022 which itself was five months after the Race Equality Commission final report was published in July last year. We have begun to begin to implement the recommendations but we all know, we share your view, that we haven't done enough. We need to go further and faster and that's why I've been clear with that position ever since I became the leader in May, as have colleagues and that's part of why we've got the update today to publicly hold ourselves to account for the progress that has and hasn't been made and to set out how we're going to improve it. Listen to the discussion today, please, you know, take a look at the report as I'm sure you have. I would be keen to have a conversation with you about whether you think what's in it is sufficient and whether it meets the definition as you would see it of a rapid improvement plan because we're not calling it that but it is, that's the language that we probably do need to be adopting if we're going to meet the recommendations in the timely manner that we know. If we're going to meet the recommendations in the timely manner that we know we need to.
Yes, if I can just stop you for a minute, Tom, I'm sure you will allow. The recommendation are differentiated, we got the priority recommendation, what we'll call do it now. And then we got the middle term and long term. What community want and want it now is the rapid improvement plan, is what? What is the council doing now? What they don't want to do, of course, we understand that an action plan may take even 10 years, but they need quick action. For me, it's about bringing the community back here. Then what I want to hear from you, Tom, is actually to say to me, in the next year, 12 months, this is what we're going to do with community. And who are the people responsible? And this is the budget allocated to tackle it. In that sense, I can go out there and champion the role of the council.
Well, we said the dates attached to the recommendations are for us to meet them in the next, within two years of. The report coming out in July 2022, so we've got 11 months to really make some serious progress on this. That means it has to be rapid and turning to your budget point. You're right that there hasn't been sufficient resource attached to this. Now though, where there are specific actions that we will discuss today that need funding. They'll be defined by different parts of the council, because this is a whole council response. And they'll be taken to the relevant committee for sign off and approval as and when. But we do expect to be dedicating budget resources to support the legacy body arrangements. So I think, again, let's have a further conversation about this. And think whether or not you and colleagues feel that what we're prepared, we're about to discuss in a minute is satisfactory or not. If it's not, hold us to account and we'll have, we'll be bringing back another update later in this year to see how far we've got.
Of course, I hear you, but something that I want the committee to realise is that I represent a trusted voice from the community. People come to me and diverse community, all of them come to me and express their anger. And what I'm saying is quite serious, the community is not happy. They want to see a rapid action from this committee, they want to see results. The ladies who were here previous to me say exactly the same thing. My advice to this committee is actually to communicate clearly in simple terms with timeline. Put the resources and say this is what we're doing in the next six to 12 months, it has to be rapid. Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. We're going to look at a report in a moment which does that. And then let's have, continue that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a petition and I think Rafia might be, yes, hello. So I wasn't sure if you're up in the gallery, I couldn't see you behind the screen.
Thank you, can I start?
Please do, do you want to just introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name's Rafia Hussain and today I'm presenting a petition. This is on behalf of Sheffield Stand Up To Racism, on behalf of Sheffield Trades Council, Sadaka. And several other organisations as well. I do apologise if I've not said your name, but like I said, it's on behalf of several organisations. First of all, I'd like to thank you Chair and members of Sheffield City Council for giving us the opportunity to share our concerns with you today. I think the girls before that I've just spoken, they've kind of like summed everything up quite nicely. And I'm not really sure what else I can add, but I've got my three minutes, so I'm going to take those, if that's okay. There was a little request from my fellow comrades that are here today and also in the gallery supporting us. If we can maybe just have a, just 30 seconds, because I'm very conscious of time, if we can observe just a 30 second silence. To remember victims of racism such as George Floyd, Stephen Lawrence. Windrush atrocities that we've seen and countless numbers of people that are experiencing racism in their daily lives. So just 30 seconds if everybody's okay, is that all right? Thank you Chair. Okay, thank you. The Race Equality Commission was established by Sheffield City Council in the summer of 2020. To provide an independent strategic assessment of the nature, extent, causes and impact of racism and race inequality within the city. The Race Equality Commission released its final report on 14th of July 2022, which is just over a year now. The report found that racism remains deep seated and prevalent in all key institutions in Sheffield. Evidence from this report has highlighted the urgency to come up with an action plan to tackle the issues of racial disparities. It instructs the council and anchor organisations to implement the recommendations within 36 months. And to commit to becoming anti-racist within 24 months. Sheffield Stand Up To Racism and other anti-racist campaigners issued an open statement which was published on 21st of June. Which demands action from the council. What I'd like to just emphasise here is that the findings of this equality commission report were not surprising. Because history is plagued by countless examples of injustice taking place. In the form of inaction and racist policies and practices in well-established institutions. Nevertheless, as you can imagine, this knowledge has caused anxiety to resurface, not only for 20% of Bay members that live in Sheffield. But equally so for the majority of white British citizens living in the city. Including my white British friends sitting in this room today, who agree that racial trauma is not acceptable in any shape or form. As a teacher, I can tell you that when I am one-third of a way into a course. I must be in a position to assess the impact that my teacher, teaching is having on the lives of the young people that I have been allocated the responsibility for. However, it saddens us that one year on Sheffield City Council is still at that investigative phase. The latest update on the Sheffield City Council, I'm aware there was one in December. The response to the race commission document dated 2nd of August, which is today. States that you have not responded to this urgent issue at the pace or urgency that this issue demands. Not enough of what has been done has had measurable outcomes, limiting the ability to track improvement. Issues with quality of data, which you've already mentioned Chair. Which as a result does not allow you to see exactly which council processes are racially biased. There seems as if though a lot has been happening within the council, I've had a really good read at your report. I'll buy very little objective outcomes, we must be working with smart targets. Trade unions, many of whom are sitting here today, are concerned about the lack of external consultation. We're aware that the council is reflecting on this. Today, we are calling on Sheffield City Council to provide transparent and detailed information about the personnel. Comprising its established race equality body and the processes of consultation involved in the appointment of these individuals. Provide a detailed and transparent action plan with an appropriate budget and timeframe of when these targets that are identified will be actioned. Produce a detailed plan of how key anchor organisations are going to respond to the report and meet the key recommendations that are highlighted by the Race Equality Commission report. Organise an open meeting where Sheffield key anchor organisations, institutions, partners, third sector organisations and members of the public are invited. To discuss ways to address the issues that are highlighted by this report. Sheffield City Council must lead by example, we want to be proud of our council, we want to work with our council. I have listened to your press statement, Tom, and thank you, I'm grateful that you have really decided to triage this as high priority. Thank you.
Thank you Rafia, thank you for coming today and thank you to everyone who signed the petition. And thank you to members of the organisation who've joined you today. I've said earlier on today, we know we must do more and this is a high priority. And we will be bringing back a further report later in this year, where you and others will be able to hold us to account again if. And we haven't made enough progress, but I sincerely hope that by then, we'll all be able to agree that progress is being made. The city partnership board is the body which is working to establish the Race Equality Commission Legacy Working Group. They've appointed somebody called Richard Stubbs to lead that. And they've set up a working group to, to prepare the legacy body. It's, yes, it's taken time, I know, they're developing a set of options for that long-term legacy arrangements. Which will hold the whole city to account, all the city council and other organisations for its work to become anti-racist. And in the autumn, that group will be presenting a recommendation back to the city partnership board. And that's a board which brings together the city council, the NHS, the police, Voltrix in Sheffield, a range of different organisations. And that recommendation will be about the most appropriate model that they think is right for the legacy body. How it should be implemented and a transparent model for recruitment to that body. The commission, when it publishes recommendations, clearly envisaged that that legacy body would hold the entire city to account. It's taken too long, but time is now being put in over these next few months to make sure we get to a better place. The report which we're just about to discuss in a moment sets out our interim progress against our own action plan, which we set in December. And as you've clearly had a look, progress has been made, not enough, but we'll be bringing it back in December. We will be working with those anchor institutions that you mentioned in order to make sure that they're also on track. And that's part of why the legacy body is so important, so that that's there to hold everyone to account. We will be holding an open event in the autumn, bringing together individuals, community organisations, those anchor institutions and other stakeholders to discuss our progress. Very, very open to thinking about where that is and how that event takes place. But more details will be published about that soon, but look, we know we must do more. I think you can see it around the room today, we do take this very seriously and I'd just like to say thank you for coming today.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you everybody, so we're now going to take the main agenda item. Which is about the Sheffield City Council response to the Race Equality Commission. The presenting officers for this will be James Henderson, supported by Adele Robinson and Claire Taylor. Thank you. For the benefit of people watching and just in the gallery, do just introduce yourselves again, thank you very much.
Thank you Chair, my name's James Henderson, I'm Director for Policy and Democratic Engagement.
I'm Adele Robinson, the Equalities and Engagement Manager.
Okay, thank you and thank you as well to everybody from the public who's come and spoken this afternoon already. I just wanted to start by saying as councillor Hunt has already acknowledged. Although some progress has been made in terms of the progress towards the Race Equality Commission recommendations. That progress has not been sufficiently fast, it's not been sufficiently far reaching. And from the perspective of the officers of the council, that is a matter of some considerable regress. And I wanted to make that point very clearly at the, at the beginning of my remarks. In terms of the report, as we've heard, the Race Equality Commission published its final report last year on the 14th of July. That was a report to the whole city with far-reaching findings and recommendations. The city council accepted all of the commission's findings and recommendations that were relevant to us. And this committee agreed our organisational response on the 5th of December last year. So the report before the committee this afternoon sets out the progress that has been made. Some of the learning that we have taken from the first few months of the, of the work that we've been doing. And that's important in terms of learning as the progress that we make or fail to make indeed. Will dictate whether or not we meet the goal that we have all signed up to, to become an anti-racist organisation. Which is something that we committed to do within two years of the publication of the report. And it will also dictate, as we've said, whether we fulfil all of the commission's recommendations within three years. Across the organisation as a whole, there has been some progress and some good activity, some of which I will outline in a moment. But as I've said, this is not in all areas, it's not been comprehensive. And as some of the speakers from the, from the public have said, not enough of our activity has been sufficiently focused on outcome. And being able to demonstrate impact that would enable us to track improvement. And as a result of that, we have concluded that the council has not moved quickly enough in responding to the recommendations of the report. And the report in front of you today makes a number of recommendations which, if you agree to them, will see us set out the chief executive. A plan to further define priority actions, identify gaps and target support and challenge. And indeed, provide a further report to this committee this coming December. To provide further accountability for progress to want that. We want to support senior leaders within the organisation to be able to set out time-bound actions. Which are realistic and critically, as I've said, will have a measurable impact in terms of the progress that's being made. And that will aim to support us to make progress and to be clear about how we contribute to efforts across the city with partners and residents. Including as we develop the corporate plan for the organisation and contribute to the work on city goals. So in terms of what the, of what the report says briefly, there has been activity across the council. And the report details this under the three priority areas where identified in December. That's learning development and awareness raising, de-biasing systems and processes and improving data. So on the, on the first of those, to tackle evidence that knowledge of racial literacy and cultural competency varied across the organisation. We have now rolled out mandatory training and extended our, our learning offer for staff through a new self-directed learning platform. 700 managers across the organisation have been trained on, with new mandatory recruitment training. With 150 more booked on, which represents 65% of our manager cohort. We have improved our workforce data with specific reporting on race and ethnicity and pay gap data. And this committee received a report on that at one of its previous meetings. We're currently extracting the data for the latest report and early indications show that there have been some small but positive movements in terms of the overall workforce profile. Particularly in terms of new starters and apprentices. Some services within the council have made further changes and improvements beyond that. For example, our housing service has changed its apprenticeship recruitment process by promoting opportunities within local communities and accepting CVs. And that has led to almost half of the latest cohort of apprentices who are being, who were recruited to that service. Coming from a black Asian or minoritised ethnic background. We've launched a new platform to guide officers through the equality impact assessment process with training guidance and, and access to support to drive up the quality of those assessments. So that members are properly informed about the impacts on different protected characteristics when making decisions. And that has had a positive impact and we're seeing some of that already. For example, in public health, it has led to recruiting a workforce to new stop smoking service, which is more representative of the community it serves. We are also putting in place new, new approaches around data. And a new data platform has begun to be implemented, which we're beginning to test and staff beginning to be trained on that. However, in doing that, that has highlighted that in common with many organisations. The day that we don't hold the level of information that we should expect around the people who are using our services. And that limits our ability to respond to different needs. We're also working more broadly on tools and products that take data and turn it into something useful. That managers and leaders within the organisation can use to help them understand and take into account the needs of all Sheffield's communities. Taking on board the point that was made earlier about data being only one part of the equation. Services more broadly have also been taking forward activity within their different areas. So, I've already mentioned the work in public health around recommissioning services, undertaking full equality impact assessments, which have led to changes in what and how we commission some of those services. The Sheffield City Archives, which is part of the library service, has been working in partnership with the Centre for Equity Inclusion, the University of Sheffield. And the writer Desiree Reynolds, who applied for and were awarded a £112,000 grant to progress and expand the Dig Where You Stand work, which uses the city's archives to explore marginalised histories, specifically people of colour in the city before windrush. We have also made improvements in terms of the workforce profile within our youth service recruiting new youth workers in every local area committee area and in our youth justice service as well. As the Chair has already set out, we're also supporting the time-limited and independently-led REC legacy working groups to develop a set of options for long-term legacy arrangements. And that group, as has been said, is planning to present options in the autumn. So, just by way of summary then, as we've said, the Race Equality Commission was independent in nature, it looked at the nature extent and causes of racism and race inequality in Sheffield. It made some hard-hitting and important recommendations and we want to make good on our promise to tackle those issues. We haven't gone far enough, that is very plain. We need to do more, we need to go further, it needs to be more consistent than we have done at the moment and it needs to be able to demonstrate impact, as I have said earlier in my remarks. The actions and recommendations that are set out in this report will enable us to do that, we believe. And that will enable us to build on the learning that we've had today to move forwards together. So, very happy to answer any questions on anything within the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, James. Okay, I've seen first was councillor Orton and councillor Argenzio and then I can see councillor Nas, councillor Smith and councillor Bellman. So, let me take councillor Orton first.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, James, for the report. I will make some points I've probably made before. I am struggling slightly, I have great sympathy with the people who have come to ask us questions today in terms of wanting specific actions and progress. Because I think this is now the fourth report we've had in response to the REC report. And I agree with the comments they've made, that it does seem quite vague and quite kind of high-level. We are doing lots of things. It's not clear, and we should be doing more, and I agree, and it's not clear why we aren't doing more and what the problem is. And, look, I appreciate that transforming a culture... The REC report was making some quite radical demands of us, I think. I think it's fair to say, to put it that way. And it doesn't do it justice to have four kind of fairly anodyne reports saying, well, we're doing something about it, we can't really say what in any great detail. So, I share that frustration. It strikes me that if there are systems that need de-biasing and there is a struggle to do that, I accept it's going to be difficult to do that. But a year in, we should be able to say, well, look, this is the difficulty we've had. These are the systems we've realised that have biases in. This is what we think we have to do, but this is why it's difficult and we haven't made progress. And some, you know, some concrete examples like that, I think, would be, would give me some satisfaction, some assurance that the progress was being made. Culture change, culture change is a difficult thing to achieve. But what, you know, we're not, we're not, you know, our culture is not sufficiently anti-racist. I think that's almost certainly true. But in what way specifically? I appreciate there may have been conversations going on between officers and some of those may have been difficult and, you know, all grist of the mill in getting going with those different conversations. Not a lot has come back to us as members, I don't think, saying, look, this is what we've identified about the culture and this is the member's role in it and therefore this is what we expect members of council councillors to do. Specifically, specifically, I've long argued for more training for members of the Senior Office Employment Committee sitting on employment panels, not just equalities training, but unconscious bias. Unconscious bias training is not just a race equality issue, it's an important skill for employment, people that make employment decisions anyway. Because unconscious bias can lead you to make the wrong decision, whoever your candidates are. So, I'm not saying, maybe it has come through, but I've not seen it, I've not sat on one of those for a while myself. So, this does lead me to doubt that, yes, you know, just to come back fourth time and say, well, we're doing something and we would like to go faster. When this is a difficult thing, reports like this, reports like the Race Equality Commission have existed before and the perception has been that they've been kind of nodded at and kicked into the long grass, that's the perception. And I don't want that to happen again, I don't want that to happen with this. I want, if it's difficult and we're not doing enough, to understand why we're not doing enough, to understand, to have some recognition that we as a council understand more precisely what the problems are and why it is difficult to make progress on them if that indeed is the problem. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Orton. Councillor Argenzio.
Hi, thank you, thank you very much for the report. And I think, you know, I want to echo what the questioners said before we, you know, to bring another report, I mean, it's really good that there has been some progress. But I think particularly people who were involved in the Race Equality Commission, the commissioners don't feel that there's been sufficient progress. And in fact, I have had conversations where people feel that we've given up. So whatever messaging we're putting out there, people, including our staff from minoritised communities, don't feel that we are doing enough. And they are asking for actions, they're not asking for another report. They're asking us, what are you doing? And whatever we are doing at the moment is not working well enough in the short term. So I think we do need something for the short term. The changing culture is something that is going to take time. The Race Equality Commission report highlighted the fact that we are in fact a racist city and we need to address that and we need to have some rapid action that we can say in six months' time, we want to and we want to do something that is going to change this blockage here, for example, to understand why all our employees, I mean, it's good that we have apprentices, but I want to know why there are no more directors that are not white. I want to understand why there is such an under-representation of people from minoritised communities in positions of leadership. And it's not just in the council, it's in the NHS, it's in the universities, it's everywhere. We need people that represent Sheffield as a whole in position of leadership because those are the people that are going to inspire the young people that have been here, that, yes, they can do it. So, there is something that we're doing or not doing or doing wrong that is not working. And we need to understand, you know, as councillor Orton says, we need to understand what we're not doing because it's not enough. And the report was published over a year ago now and, you know, the progress has been minimal. There is a lot of good intentions, but not enough results or not of the kind that people who live it in their own lived experience feel that actually change is coming. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nas.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a few questions. I'm really proud of the multi-ethnic and cultural diversity Sheffield is. I'm also proud that we are the first city of century in the UK. However, with this being said, people in our communities from black, Asian and minority ethnic background still face inequalities and have lost trust due to the lack of progress on the Race Equality Report and say nothing has changed and nothing will change. The National Race Think Tank, Runnymede Trust, state that good intentions are not enough. I say we need to stop the talking and deliver real meaningful action. Language matters, the report references de-biasing our systems. What does this mean? I take phone calls from council staff from black, Asian and minority ethnic communities who say nothing has changed to reduce inequalities and the lack of support they receive. I would like to know what concrete steps the council is taking to put its own house in order on employee relations. What changes have staff from BAME background seen in the last year when discrimination is being reported? I have read the workforce data report in detail and BAME staff are still overrepresented in grievance cases. What's being done about that? This was reported last year. As a comparator, the Law Court report was published nearly a year from the Race Equality Commission and BAME staff are overrepresented in HR cases, except sickness, absence and procedure. What message do you have to all the 165 witnesses who emotionally and passionately shared evidence submissions to highlight failings of the systems to tackle racism? I was one of the commissioners, we sat through lots of evidence, people came and spoke about what they have been through. What message do we have for them? I spoke to constituents in my ward, Donal and Tinsley. There have no messaging or comms to those who face inequalities each and every day. How will you ensure that you communicate going forward to those who are in seldom-heard communities? The report mentioned that there have been 44% increase of BAME apprenticeships. Can you break this down in numbers? Because the last report we got, apprenticeships were significantly low from BAME applicants. How will you ensure, I was recently made aware in the workforce data report that apprenticeships from black, Asian and minority backgrounds has significantly reduced. And this was an area of concern. This report was shared about eight weeks ago. And that's my question, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to, I've got three more councillors who have expressed an interest in speaking. I'll let you make any reflections now if you want and then I'll take the final three.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, members of the committee. So, I think in response to councillor Orton's questions, to begin with, I'll bring Adele in on some of these as well. I think that we are hopefully very clear in the report that one of the challenges that we had with the set of actions that was set out in the December report was that there wasn't enough clarity about how we were going to be able to measure impact. And I think that is at the heart of why we are bringing this report today. And it doesn't say as much as you would like and as much as I would like frankly about the detail of the systems and precise issues that aren't working. What we want to do and what we will do following today's meeting is to have a much more targeted action plan that will focus on short-term action as councillor Argenzio has highlighted in her question, that will set out exactly what it is that we're going to do to make more rapid progress. I do want to emphasise that there has been some progress that has been made. But as I said in my introductory remarks, that hasn't been as consistent as it needed to be. And that's partly to do with the fact that we haven't had the systems in place to be able to monitor that across the organisation. Adele, I don't know if there's anything you want to say on that or Joe's specific question about members of the council and training that they receive.
Yeah, I mean, I do think one of the things you said earlier is obviously one of the issues is when we are going forward and taking action, we are actually uncovering more action that needs to be taken. So, it's kind of, it is coming around, the more that we do and the more that we look at things and the more my colleague who's been leading on this, Hamera, goes out and speaks to people, then we're picking up additional actions that were not actually in the report earlier from December. So we're adding those to the actions that we're undertaking. And kind of one of those examples has been in one of the actions that we've looked at here are kind of recruitment processes. That is one of the systems that we're looking at at the moment about de-biasing systems, as councillor Nas said, that we're looking very in detail at that recruitment process. And that will cover issues around senior level diversity and obviously then diversity in apprenticeships, et cetera. So that is a key.
Questions. You're absolutely right to highlight the fact that there isn't sufficient diversity in our senior leadership. That is absolutely the case. It's something that we highlighted in the workforce report. It's not unique to Sheffield City Council within the city, it's a common issue across all organisations. That's not an excuse, we need to do much better on that. And I think it's really important that we continue to focus on that as well as making sure that where there are opportunities to increase diversity elsewhere in our workforce, that we take those as well. To clarify the point about apprentices, that was specifically in relation to housing apprentices, that 44% figure related. You're also absolutely right to say that black, Asian, minoritised ethnic people are over disproportionately represented in our employee relations cases. That is a significant issue for the council. It is one that Lucy Thompson, who's the interim director of HR, is looking at at the moment and is looking at what steps we need to take to address that. But we know that is a significant issue. Adele's team see that on a regular basis and is something that we're committed to taking action on. Adele, I don't know if there's anything more that you want to say on that point specifically.
Yeah, I mean, obviously that is something that we're looking at, kind of a deep dive into the actual cases to see what is happening and I think that that is what is needed to be done. So taking the specific cases, going back to the beginning and seeing where some of those issues are. And that is obviously taking time to then to rectify what went wrong in that process and what we can do. And we're looking with HR at the whole process from beginning to end to look at, you know, is it a problem kind of when something first arises? Do we need to do more training and then putting in that training? And then when the team are going out and speaking to people, as I said earlier, we're then uncovering some other issue that needs attending to. And then we're speaking to Lucy and HR colleagues to do something about that process as well. So it is taking time to do that, but absolutely that's a concern and we're looking at that deep dive into those cases.
Okay, thank you both very much. Okay, I've got four councillors who want to speak, so I'm going to take them and draw a line there. So in order, councillor Smith, councillor Bellman, councillor Williams, councillor Dale. Councillor Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll be, excuse me, I'll be brief. Everybody in the room upstairs recognises that progress hasn't been fast enough. For me, calling it a matter of regret isn't strong enough. This needs to be kick-started basically. And I'm kind of disappointed that if I read the recommendations, maybe it's just the wording, but I don't sense from those recommendations us as a council doing anything radically different to change the course that we're on. So my specific question is, what can we do that's radically different to kick-start this and get the progress that we want? And another specific, Olivier mentioned money. So, again, specifically, is it budget that's holding us back? And if we could make quicker progress with a bigger budget, how much would it cost?
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Bellman.
Thanks. I wanted to raise another issue around improving our action plans throughout the organisation. So on Audit and Standards Committee last week, my colleague councillor Laura McLean raised an issue about an action plan that came there and I don't want to single out this particular one, it's just an example. But some of the actions around equality objectives were, I think, exactly what Olivier would have called fuzzy. So, examples were, we will encourage this, we will look at that, we will have conversations about this, we will explore that with a three-month timeline on them. And to me, that's where we are really falling into that fuzzy language that just makes us act slowly. We are thinking about things and of course we thought to have conversations and all that. But those to me are not really the actions, they are not purposeful actions. So I do think there's a bit of... So I do think there's a bit of work to be done, there's quite a lot in this document around doing training with managers about improving our equality impact assessments. But I think we also need that training about what a proper action plan looks like and what constitutes an action that really is meaningful and really will take that work forward. Otherwise, our work's going to continue to be too slow on that. I think it's also been mentioned a couple of times, can we involve our trade unions more in this work? I note that all our trade union conveners have done the training, I know this work is really important to our trade unions. And actually, there's a lot of expertise there as well that does draw on the lived experience of members of those unions. And they've done a lot of work in this area. And I think as you've referred to on some of the, they will also be able to provide quite a lot of data and feedback on how we can make some of the improvements in some of the instances you've talked around, such as the number of disciplinary cases, et cetera. I do think we've got a bit of an opportunity around, as I said at our last corporate joint consultative committee, that we reviewed the purpose of that committee and we could, I think this is something that we could really usefully discuss at that level with that group as well. So we're doing some meaningful work there. And finally, it was just to respond to a point that Geoff raised there as well, which is something that isn't in the paper, but it is about raising our own racial literacy as councillors and the work that we do ourselves. You know, we did establish at the last governance committee a member development working group and I think that's something that we need to take forward. I know you're a member of that group, Geoff. Something that we need to do ourselves so that we are challenging ourselves, we're improving our own training and development about equality, diversity, inclusion and how we become an anti-racist organisation.
Thank you. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's quite clear following this that the council is going to come under increasing pressure to change direction. And my concern is that in doing so, it will become introspective and start looking in on itself. My concern also is that a lot of the services that the council deliver are done by outside organisations. With the notable exception, you mentioned the public health process and recommissioning services. What guarantees or what reassurances can you give me that in working with these partners who deliver council services, they follow the same standards that we are being asked to follow? Because if we're going to improve and do well, that's all very well, but it's not enough if these outside bodies or partners are failing.
Thank you. Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Chair. I don't know where to begin really. I was a commissioner on the Race Equality Commission and for personal reasons, I thought we were going to make strides at the beginning, there was a need for it. I've got family who have lived experience of discrimination and I wanted to be, I made a commitment when I became a Race Equality Commissioner to not be silent on this issue. So I can't defend the fact that we've not moved on enough within the council. This week alone, I've been contacted by two citizens in Sheffield. One who's been racially profiled by a member of our staff in the city centre and another member of staff who has got protected characteristics and has been discriminated against, who is employed by this council. We're over a year on now from the commission. When I became a commissioner and the report came out, myself and a fellow commissioner went to a conference of senior leaders of this council to talk about what needed to change, the culture shift. Being an anti-racist organisation and an anti-racist city is not an administrative process, it is a culture change, it's action. And I completely agree with what everyone is saying. What are we doing? How are we seeing it? We can't measure this simply with data, this has got to be measured by people's lived experiences. And if a year on, people are still coming to us, members of this community, members of this city, telling us that the council itself is still presenting itself in an anti-racist fashion, then I feel like I've let my family down, I feel like I've let my community down. And I feel like I, when I made that commitment of now, let people down and I'm not going to allow that to happen. I think myself and Meredith need to meet straight away with this group of young people to find out about the individual case that you mentioned, because I'm not aware of that. And if I can be made aware of that, we can deal with that. And I think, you know, we made it really clear at that conference about this not being an administrative process, but this is what it feels like. And I agree with what colleagues have said, we just seem to be having meeting after meeting, going round and round, looking at reports, but we've not actually spoken to people about their experiences of us making the change. And we have to lead by example. The council must set a precedent, we called for this commission and we have got to lead the way in this city so that we can also then hold our other stakeholders accountable for their part in making this shift. So I think that was more of a comment than a question, but thank you for that, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Right, James and Adele, and I think Claire, you wanted to come at the end as well.
Yeah, thank you. So just on those questions. Firstly, councillor Smith's question about what we can do to kind of kick-start this and how do we make this feel more real and what is it that's holding us back? I think that what we've said in the report is, and you called me out on the comment I made at the beginning about this being a matter of regret, let me be clear, it is not good enough, it isn't good enough. And I want to be very, very clear on that point. We have introduced some additional capacity to ensure that we have got some clarity and some kind of, some proper action planning, coming to councillor Velbin's point, in place and a mechanism to ensure that the organisation as a whole were able to work with different services, track the progress that's being made and bring back a much more comprehensive update on where we are at the December meeting. So that work has already begun. And I think to the point that you made about the recommendations not perhaps giving the sense of urgency that is clearly coming out of this conversation, I'm sorry that that hasn't come through, but that is absolutely our intention with these recommendations, that we make rapid urgent progress across the whole set of issues that we have here. So that is something that we're doing. In terms of the point that councillor Velbin made around action planning and making them more purposeful, I think that's what we've seen. So if you go back to the report from last December, the actions there weren't crisp enough in hindsight, they didn't, they weren't clear enough in terms of the impact that we expected to see. That's what we are now going to do, do the work to tighten up and make sure that they are doing that and allow us to actually track the progress that we need to see across this. In terms of trade union involvement, the Strategic Equality and Inclusion Board includes trade union representatives, we're going to ask that board to monitor this work in the interim ahead of the further progress report being brought to that committee in December 2023. So we will engage trade unions through that mechanism, but we can look to reach out to them on an individual basis as well. And in terms of councillor Williams' point on our partners, that's, so we are working with procurement through our commercial services team to ensure that the Race Quality Commission recommendations are built into our procurement practices so that we can hold partners to account in the same way that we would expect ourselves to be held to account. And that's where it is ongoing at the moment. Adele, do you want to say anything more on any of that?
I think that we're also, we've been working with Member Services about member training and we're putting obviously a plan in place to ensure that one, you've got, members have access to the training that we already have on things like unconscious bias, but also the kind of racial literacy and cultural competency training that we're looking at, that members are included with that, with senior leaders going forward. So we're working closely with Member Services. And again, to just point, yes, we are working with trade unions quite closely on this and looking at training and what they can bring to that as well. So we're working with trade unions. And I think we are picking up and as members of the equality team are going around and talking to people, it is very clear about the racism that exists within the council and exists within our staff as well. And that's not something that we are pushing under the carpet as it obviously has come out in our disciplinary, et cetera, procedures grievances. So we are working with our HR colleagues on that as well very clearly. So we, you know, we want to forcefully say that we are looking at that.
Thank you, councillor. Very quickly, just to add, there were lots of questions about fuzzy language, action planning and specificity. And so I just wanted to kind of add some reflections, particularly around the training offer, because I was struck by the comment, this isn't an administrative process. And I think one of the challenges is we work in an organisation which is full of administrative processes and to de-bias them, we need people to understand the impacts of those processes. So some of our training and development work has been around those processes at the moment. We need to go much further around the behavioural side that supports the cultural change that we're talking about. And that might be things like reciprocal mentoring programmes, the cultural competence, racial competence programmes that Adele's mentioned, member training, not just on the principles of the legislation, but also the impact of action and behaviour. We need to look at bias, unconscious and otherwise. We need to look at microaggression and the impact that has in the workplace, active allyship, so not standing by, and then specific diversity in leadership programmes. And so because one of the challenges isn't just we haven't got enough diversity in our senior leadership team, we don't get wide recruitment and diverse recruitment fields to pull from. So we've got an accountability to make sure that we do that. I think what good looks like is us commissioning that across the anchor institutions across the city. So it's not just Sheffield City Council doing that, but it's also us working with NHS and education partners that enable that as well. And then there are other pieces of work that we need to do which ensures that we're an organisation where people of all diversities can progress. And that includes things like maths in English and basic skills to stop the barriers and the bars to progression that we also see and I've certainly heard brought up by the trade unions on a number of occasions. So I think from my perspective, one of the things we've commissioned is this deep dive into the employee relations matters. That's being led externally and as Dale said, the director of HR is leading that. But a radical rethinking of our employee support processes around this, including training, is what's required and what you'll see in the next update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Okay. None of us can be pleased about the situation that we're in today. I'm just going to, let me just come one second. We've got a set of recommendations that are ahead of us. And look, if we back this today, I don't think any of us can be pleased in supporting this and the situation that we're in. We would be, you know, sending this report on its way with a clear sense of unhappiness about the situation that we're in and a sense of urgency that the situation has to improve. This can't just be another report. Before this meeting, I said that we needed to accelerate our... Sorry, I'll move a little bit closer, is that any better? We have to accelerate our progress, I meant it. And in December, when this report comes back again, we can't be here again. I think that's crystal clear from everybody. So that's the task at hand and there is a real sense of urgency clearly to it. It's four months away. Extraordinarily, I will, just because I know you remember the commission, so just, do you want to just quickly just come up? But we do have a full agenda, so I will just actually be very, very brief.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. It's an observation that I've seen James mention, James talk a lot about regret. And when there is regret, there is always an apology. And I am sure that the committee here will agree with me, similar to the three report, that at least the Asian and African heritage community deserve a full apology from the leadership of the council.
Okay, well, we have committed to implement all the recommendations of the Race Equality Commission. Look, I think I need to reflect on that and it's not something that I'm going to, you know, that's not an undertaking that I would make lightly. So I want to reflect on that and then come back and have a further conversation with you, if that's okay?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, we have some recommendations ahead of us. Are members willing to support those recommendations? Okay, see no dissent. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're now going to take the public questions that relate to the next agenda item, which is about the draft local plan. And I'm not sure how many people are here to ask them in person, but there have been a lot of questions that have been tabled in advance. And everybody who has tabled a question will receive a full written answer. The way that we're going to do this today is that I'll invite everybody who's here to ask questions about the local plan to ask them. And then after everyone has asked questions, I'm going to respond with a statement before we turn to the main committee report about the local plan. The reason for doing so is that the report which we'll shortly be discussing addresses many of the concerns that have been raised in all of the tabled questions and indeed maybe some that we'll hear today. In particular about warm sites. Many of the issues that are in the tabled questions are covered in the report and because it hasn't been discussed or agreed, it would be premature at this stage to provide definitive answers on behalf of the committee, one that the committee hasn't yet discussed the report and decided on the next steps in the local plan. So I hope that sounds okay. I'm not sure, we've got, is it Fiona?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we've got Fiona. And can I just see, is there anyone else who's here who's here to ask questions about the draft local plan? No, just checking. Okay, Fiona?
So I'm sort of representing, there's a panel for the Springwell site, so I'm obviously here representing a lot of them, we're actually on holiday, whether it been school holidays, August period, et cetera. I know that a number of the residents have already submitted questions, they've sent emails, et cetera. And I know obviously from speaking to the residents that they will actually be expecting written responses to all of those questions, sort of as expected. I'd submitted some original questions and then having seen the actual agenda item itself, where obviously you've put in some responses to some of the questions on there, obviously that then set another set of questions. But I think the key question for us at the moment is why did the council bother with a public consultation of the draft plan? And that is the general feeling of the residents. It feels like you've actually shown complete disregard for, you know, there was a 4,000 plus signature petition. They were done separately and I just wanted publicly noting as well that when the petitions were submitted, because once you submit a petition, you can't actually change it, they obviously got put in a different petitions, but it was all about the same thing. It was never intended that it was obviously aimed at the traveller site, it was aimed at the actual thing in a whole. So just obviously want that public noting as well. You obviously got objections then from residents, you got them from the councillors themselves. We obviously went to the February meeting where it was tried to be discussed and in fairness, we sat through a four hour meeting, five hour meeting where we got to the end, they didn't actually even get the opportunity to sort of like sit and present it properly. It was like, we'll get to it, we're near the end, we'll make a vote, we'll just all leave, you know? So obviously as residents, we were really disappointed when we sat and watched that on the website, when we'd sat through all the meeting just to actually listen to that point. You've had objections also from local business as well to Crystal Peaks, I believe have actually submitted something formally as well. So the recommendation obviously that's in the report is that you actually progress as before. There's actually no change really to anything that, when this was put out as the draft local plan back in December, there's not really anything in there that's different or changed despite the fact that you've had all these sort of like objections. there's not really anything in there that's different or changed, despite the fact that you've had all these sort of like objections. And nothing really that gives us assurance that you'll actually fix any of the major issues and problems that we've actually highlighted. And so, you know, we've had repeated requests for data and information, they've not been forthcoming. And we've obviously had the submission asking for it to be removed from the plan. And the response that's come back is that you've openly admitted that the removal would be a major amendment, which would involve then seeking an alternative site, which again, I'm not sure why we've not looked at that already. But that will just obviously delay the delivery of the local plan by about another 12 months because you'd have to go back out for public consultation. I mean, this public consultation opened sort of like when the December period, so it's not been 12 months. But, you know, who's to say it's already late this plan anyway? So, you know, it just feels to us like it's a tick boxing exercise. And we're going to press on with the recommendations. Everything seems to be that we'll just kick the problems with no solution and we'll just review them at the planning stage. That's basically what you kind of get out of the report or go through the individual things that are in there. But obviously it's causing a real upset to the residents. There doesn't seem to be any sort of consideration for the cost. And when you sit and you listen to the previous presentations that we've just had about, they're asking for money, but we'll just do this, whatever the cost is. And to us, it doesn't feel like it aligns with your council values. So your council values state that, you know, you'll put the people at the heart of everything that you're doing. As residents of Springwell, we do not feel that this council are putting us at the heart of anything that you've discussed. And, you know, you're just going to sort of press on despite the fact that you've had all the objections. So that's just the statement as such. Do you want me to go through the individual questions now? Do you want to sort of like me to list them off like you did the first people or do you want me to sort of like discuss them?
Do you want to, yeah, feel free to run through them. And then what I'm going to say is the report and the discussion that we'll have will address quite a lot of the issues that you have included in your tabled questions. So yeah, please, thank you.
Okay, so the first bit, in section 1.4.36, first question is, do you as a council honestly believe that lorries that carry gypsy traveller equipment that runs from diesel generators, which is what they're going to be serviced from, will not create any noise disruption or add to the already hazardous levels of air pollution? We've highlighted as a committee the 2015 report that showed you around the air pollution in our city, which was actually worse than the city centre as of last year in 2015. Since then, you've approved so many different silo projects in that particular area that will have added to that, we feel. But in terms of your response to that is that you feel like you will be able to mitigate it, but you haven't actually said what you're going to do about it. So that was the first question. Second question was also, we've got over 100,000 square feet of unlet industrial units already. So one of the things that you actually mentioned in the report, that you feel that the requirement to do this actually outweighs any of the other arguments around why we need to retain the field, the fact that obviously there's the gas park, there's the electricity pylons that are there. You saying that obviously losing the agricultural land that we've had there for the last 20 years far outweighs, you know, by obviously putting these buildings there when we've already got so many unlet buildings, why do we need more? That was the next question. You talk about a proposed buffer that reduces the plan of the site by about 46%. So how are you going to fit all of this in? We did ask at a lack meeting that we had back in February about when you actually came to do a site, a visit, what the measurements were, what the considerations were of the gradients against the suburban housing. I'm actually one of the houses that backs onto the field. So obviously for me, you know, this is what I can see and this is what I am going to see. So, you know, if this does go ahead, I need to understand exactly what is this buffer going to look like. But have you even got room to do all of this that you were proposing? But I think as well, the key issue that we're all talking about is the traffic congestion. And again, your plan here, all you talk about is that you'll put something into the transport regeneration and you'll look at it in mid 2024. So there's already an existing problem there, which we've acknowledged because you're saying that you're going to look at it as a report. This part of the plan doesn't address anything, it will just look at the extra traffic that will go in there. But you're not actually going to deal with any of the issues that are already there. We've had transport councils come out and actually look at the site with us. So Ben came out to look at it. We also had the previous councillor that came out and looked at it. Everybody verbally agrees with you, this is not the right site, it's not the place to do it. And they'll go back and they'll make inquiries, but we don't get anything back. And then we get this that just says, actually, we know what we're going to do now, it's just going to ignore everybody and we're going to press on with these recommendations. So I think for us, we obviously want to talk about what your actual commitment is to resolving these issues and why we must press on with this as the chosen site. The only response that we've ever had back to that is because it's council owned land. And so that was the reason why this particular site was chosen. We don't really understand why any of the other sites were rejected. We've asked for that full information, along with obviously the other traffic things that we've asked for. The other thing that we want to put on there as well is obviously it's council tax payer, so we pay band the council tax. Are you going to review that? Because if you put in something that's going to physically change, I understand that that's one of the things that you can actually go and challenge a tax band on. So are you going to actually be looking at any of that for the residents as well? Because obviously if you build something like this, it is going to dramatically change what our physical landscape looks like. And we obviously, the key thing for us is we just feel like we've been completely ignored as part of the, as part of the sort of like public consultation that was done. And we feel that despite whatever we say today, this is going to get recommended, you're going to push your head with it. And we're not really going to have a saying, the whole point of the public consultation was a bit of a farce. And that's it for questions for me. Thank you.
Thanks Fiona. And look, I know it's not an easy thing to come to me like this and ask questions. So I am very grateful to you for doing so and indeed to everybody who's tabled questions. And, you know, I'm sure that some of those folks will be watching from home, so I am grateful. As I say, we're about to discuss a report which addresses many of the issues that you're going to, that are included in your questions. So it's be premature for me to give definitive answers about lots of that. However, we will provide written answers to you and everybody else who's tabled many questions about this. Look, before we get into the main report on this, let me just say, the local plan matters. The questions that we've heard and had tabled, the passion, the concern and the sense of belonging that clearly underpins them all demonstrates why this matters. It's of huge significance to everyone in the city. It sets out the policies, the vision for how we're going to develop over the next 15 to 20 years. And having a plan, having not had one for many, many years, will mean that finally Sheffield would have a plan to set out where new homes for our children and grandchildren will be and where new development and employment sites can be located. We can plan the infrastructure properly, protect the green belt, while setting kind of higher standards for future development that will help us to deliver on our commitments, not least with respect to climate and tackling inequalities. That's not to say that the process of developing a plan is easy in any way. It clearly isn't. Today's meeting demonstrates that. Having kind of read all of the questions very, very carefully and hearing you today, I do understand and acknowledge the strength of feeling on this matter, as I think we all do. I think in a minute, we're going to hear from colleagues in the planning department who will introduce the report. Having heard the questions and sort of seen all the written answers, what I'm going to ask officers to consider is whether there is a way in which the strength of feeling can be fully acknowledged in the local plan process. So my question to the colleagues who will join us in a minute is, is it possible for an additional paper to be prepared that could be submitted alongside the local plan, which would ask the independent examiner to pay full and due regard to the issues that we've heard about, in particular relating to Eckington Way? That is obviously subject to a number of caveats. Not least, is this committee going to choose to endorse the report today? And then if it did, is full council going to choose to vote to submit it for examination in the autumn? However, if it did, I think it would be entirely right for us to put on record that we want to ask an examiner to look hard at all of the issues that have been raised today and to pay proper due regard to the subject of the questions around this particular site. And I will ask the officers if they can pick that up in their presentation in a minute. So having said that, you know, thank you for coming today. We're now going to turn to the main agenda item, I hope you can stay for it. And I'd like to invite the team to come up. And I think Michael Johnson and Simon Vincent are going to lead the presentation. Thank you Fiona.
Thank you.
Do you want to just introduce yourselves before we begin?
Of course, Chair, thank you. I'm Michael Johnson, my role is head of planning at the City Council.
I'm Simon Vincent, I'm the Strategic Planning Service Manager.
I'm Will Stewart, I'm Director of Investment Climate Change and Planning.
Chair, shall I start by just picking up the potential for some form of papers to be prepared? There is, there is a, there is a process to prepare something known as a topic paper that deals with sort of exceptional issues relative to local plan preparation. So that's something if this committee supported the recommendations today and full council also did, that we could look at producing a topic paper for this issue that would talk about the background and how we've arrived at this site, certainly explain the sort of strength of feeling that we've heard through the questions and comments already today and through different representations as part of the public consultation that took place in January and try to explain the balance of issues that are seen on this site in more detail, if that's okay. I will now pass to Simon, who's just going to rub through a presentation just to set the scene a little bit around the recommendation and where we are with amendments. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, just before we do that, can I just ask for a point of clarification? Just based on what you said, just the Chair, are you proposing this as a formal amendment to what we're being asked to consider today?
I think having heard the response from Michael that this is possible and that the topic paper can be prepared, then yes, it would be, yeah.
I only ask that because I think we'd agreed a bit of a protocol for having amendments. So that, at a certain point, no surprises. So I'd probably suggest actually probably park that as an amendment and perhaps don't push it forward today. But I'm sure the officer will be able to advise on that in due course. I think it's, I'm just sticking up for the officers who've done a hell of a lot of work here. And so they don't get anything dropped on them where they haven't been able to take the proper advice.
Of course.
So I'd probably suggest we don't take that forward as an amendment, if that's okay with you.
But I think the principle behind what I was asking about is being answered in that it is possible for the strength of feeling around this issue to be properly acknowledged at the submission stage. And whether that's an amendment or not, I think we are clear that the officers think that that's something worth doing.
I'm sure the officer will have noted that, but yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Chair. I'll commence with the presentation, if that's okay. So what I would like to do today really is just briefly take members and members of the public through the report. I'm just going to start very briefly by just explaining what all the different documents are. I appreciate there are a huge number of documents that make up the agenda pack today. So I think it's perhaps helpful if I just start with a bit of a guide to that. I'll then just talk about the scope for amending the plan at this stage and really just reflect on the consultation process that we've been through and the stage that we've just been through in terms of the consultation in January and February. I'll very quickly run through the main issues raised during the consultation and the potential council responses. But obviously I'm not going to repeat what's in the paper, it's the main issues are set out there. I will deal with the particular issue around Eckington Way and just make a few points about that and in relation to the proposed employment and gypsy and traveller site off Eckington Way. I'll just update members where we are in terms of comments, dealing with comments from statutory consultees and also update members on progress with the infrastructure delivery plan and finish with some next steps. So we do appreciate this is a huge amount of material for members to absorb and read. I think it runs to over, well over 1,000 pages. And it is the material that we will need to, much of it is the material we will need to submit to the government if full council approves the recommendations in due course. And just to really clarify what the appendices are. So Appendix One is the consultation statement. This is the document that the council will need to submit to the government with the publication draft plan, which summarizes the main issues raised, how the consultation was held and so on. What we've circulated with as the appendix for this report is the main consultation statement, the main report, but also, excuse me, also the council's responses to comments that were made on the site allocations and the policies map. We will be doing some further schedules which will provide responses to all sort of 2,000 or so comments that were made as part of the consultation in January and February. So you can appreciate there's been a lot of work to get through there. But that will need to be, for transparency reasons, be made available to the inspector. Appendix Two is a schedule of suggested amendments which respond to comments made during the consultation period. These are amendments which we think are necessary to address issues of soundness. And I'll say a little bit more about soundness in a minute. Appendix Three is a further schedule of other minor amendments. These are just the correct typographical errors or updates to factual information. Those would not be considered by the planning inspector. The inspector would only consider the amendments that are put forward in Appendix Two. And just to help you out with understanding what those amendments mean, Appendix Four shows track changes to all the different plan documents. Appendices Five and Six are in part of the main committee report. An update to the list of submission documents and really an update to the ongoing evidence work. Because there's a lot of evidence work that goes on in the background in producing a local plan, which a lot, much of it is iterative. Some of it is very lengthy and involving discussions with statutory bodies like the Environment Agency, for example. But a lot of that is ongoing work which will need to update even after the plan is submitted. And Appendix Six is a demographic analysis of who responded on the publication draft plan. So just to, before we get into the sort of the main issues that were raised during the consultation, I think it's important just to explain the scope for amending the publication draft plan at this stage. So the consultation we've just been through is what's called the Regulation 19 consultation. The council had already done two rounds of consultation at Regulation 18 stage in 2015 and in 2020, which was the stage where very much the public are able to have an input and say what the plan should include. The stage we've just been through now is about whether the draft plan is sound. And those soundless tests are set out in the National Planning Policy Framework. And so the amendments that we're suggesting to the plan at this stage are those that are considered necessary to address matters of soundness. The proposed amendments that we've put forward in the committee report are relatively minor. If the amendments are approved by full council, they will be submitted to the government for consideration as part of the plan's public examination. So this isn't perhaps like other strategies and plans that the council might produce where the council are just able to alter the document. It's really down to the planning inspector to decide whether the amendment should be made. If we were to propose major amendments at this stage, they would require a further Regulation 19 public consultation, which would cause significant delay in adopting the plan, we think at least a year, but possibly longer. Following the examination, the inspector will recommend what are called main modifications to the plan. These may or may not include the amendments that we are suggesting as a council now. And those main modifications would themselves be subject to further public consultation at the end of the process before the plan can be adopted. So just to move on to the main issues raised and the council's response, I won't go through these in detail because these are covered in the report. But just really to flag that there are a number of issues that were made in relation to Part One and Part Two of the plan. We're not proposing any overall, any change to the overall spatial approach and to the growth plan. We have proposed quite a few minor amendments in response to comments that were made in relation to blue and green infrastructure and those are outlined in the report. And we think that does strengthen the plan on that. And we think that does strengthen the plan on that issue. A little general support for the transport strategy, one or two minor amendments proposed there as well. As I, I won't go through all those in detail, it is set out in the report, but it just is there to flag the main issues that were raised during the consultation. And we have proposed minor amendments in relation to some of those issues. So in terms of Eckington Way and particularly the questions that Fiona Hinson raised earlier, we are recommending that the site is retained as an allocation, but with some amendments to the conditions that would be attached to the allocation. So we are clarifying that there would be a requirement for an environmental buffer between the housing and the employment and gypsy and traveller use. Making clear that developers would need to take account of the overhead power lines in the layout of any development. We've also suggested removal of the condition relating to agricultural land. Because we've received further information from Natural England about the quality of land, we've been able to come to a view on what weight to attach to that at this stage in the process. Normally that information would only be available at a planning application stage. So our conclusion, having considered all the issues and we've gone through all the matters that were raised by members of the public in the report, and our conclusion is that the site is suitable for the uses proposed. The report sets out the recommended council response to those issues. It is worth flagging that some of the issues, some matters of detail, for example final layout, air quality assessment, access, are issues that would be addressed at the planning application stage as relevant. And it's not something that a local plan needs to address at this stage in the process. As we've made clear in the report, traffic congestion and air quality were particular issues that members of the public raised in relation to this site. And the traffic modelling that we've undertaken as part of preparing the plan does show the existing traffic congestion issues on the network next to the site. However, the additional traffic generated by this development alone is not sufficient to warrant mitigation on its own. But we do recognise there are existing problems in the area on the network and those would be, need to be addressed in a revised transport strategy. Just to make a few other points around this site, the council is legally required to meet the the housing needs of gypsies and travellers who travel for work. The gypsy and traveller site that's been put forward was put forward after an extensive site search across the city. We considered literally dozens and dozens of different sites as part of the site selection process. And those details of all the sites that were considered are set out in the Site Selection Methodology Paper, which is available on the council's website. We have had legal advice to say that the Sheffield Plan would be found unsound if a site is not provided for travelling show people. So if we don't put forward this site, the council would need to provide an alternative site and we would need to go out and reconsult on that. So I think it's just to be clear on that, that we do think this is a suitable site. Just moving on to one or two other site allocation issues, one of the other sites that received quite a lot of comment was on Moor Valley Way at Owlthorpe, which is a greenfield housing site. There were also quite a lot of, there were also some significant representations from landowners and developers arguing that more land should be allocated in the green belt for development. Two notable sites are at Hezley Wood and secondly at Allgreave Park, which is sometimes known as, also known as Handworthall Farm. Those are significant proposals where the landowner is seeking allocation for employment use. Or in the case of Allgreave Park, a mixture of housing and employment. There were numerous other suggestions from developers and landowners for other green belt sites that could be released. But we're not proposing any change in response to those representations. In terms of other sort of area issues, there were representations relating to the land known as Bridle Stile at Mosborough, which is shown on the slide there, arguing that this land should be added to the green belt. In the draft plan, we've shown it as an urban green space zone and much of it is also designated as a local wildlife site. So we do feel it has significant protection. The owners of Crystal Peaks District Centre requested that the boundary of the district centre was expanded, is expanded to include the retail park. The owners of Meadow Hall argued that their centre should be, have a status of a town centre in planning terms. And there were also suggestions for seven additional local green spaces. In the case of all those comments, we're not suggesting any changes are made to the plan in response to those representations. And the reasons for that are really are set out in the report. In terms of comments from statutory consultees, we are continuing to work towards statements of common ground with a number of the prescribed bodies, the prescribed bodies that we have to consult with. So Historic England, the Environment Agency, National Highways and Natural England all made representations on the plan. They're comfortable that we can, you know, we continue to work with them on these statements of common ground. Some of those are likely to be signed or we hope they will be signed before we get to the stage of public hearings in the new year. But because of ongoing work in some cases, particularly around transport modelling and flood risk, we'll need to keep working with those bodies right up to the start of the examination hearings, which are likely to be in the new year. So there is this ongoing work, as I say, on the evidence base to address outstanding matters which will be raised by those bodies, including a level two strategic flood risk assessment, further transport modelling focusing particularly on the mitigation measures that are needed on the strategic road networks, that's the M1 and the A616, which National Highways have responsibility for. And we're also having discussions with Natural England around an update to the habitat regulations assessment, which deals with their comments and we're confident that will be completed before we submit the plan to government. Just a quick update finally in terms of the infrastructure delivery plan. We published the part one infrastructure delivery plan in January. We've just received a part two update from the consultants who've been working on that for us. And that will now be available for full council in September, if this report is referred to full council. The update will include infrastructure schedules, setting out the types of infrastructure the city needs alongside anticipated delivery mechanisms and estimates of cost where possible. Again, because this is, the process of working on infrastructure is very much an iterative process and things change all the time. New information becomes available. We do expect a further iteration of the IDP later in the year that will reflect our further outputs from the transport modelling. But again, that will be completed before the examination hearings in the new year. So finally, in terms of the next steps, if this committee approves, endorses the recommendations today, if the committee endorses the recommendations today, the report will be referred to full council on the 6th of September. If that report and the amendments are approved by full council, the plan will be submitted to the government later in September. The Secretary of State would then appoint an inspector to examine the plan. The examination starts as soon as we submit the plan. But the hearings themselves, the public hearings, we don't expect those will take place until early, early next year. We anticipate receiving the inspector's final report where they would make recommendations on any main modifications that are necessary. We would expect to receive that around autumn 2024, an adoption hopefully by the end of next year. But this is all dependent really on the length and complexity of the examination and what issues the inspector finds when they start looking at the plan. That's the end Chair, and I will hand over to you for your questions.
Thank you very much. Right, move to questions or comments from any committee members. See Douglas? councillor Johnson?
Very well, to be fair, another question, there's three points I want to make. One is, you know, I guess what we all say, it's very welcome that we got to this point. Because we've all been saying, especially those who were in opposition for many years, all been saying that what this council really needs is an up-to-date local plan. And as it was getting increasingly out of date, it was obvious that, you know, we were not protecting people in Sheffield well enough against poor quality development. Yeah, and the fact that there was also lots of good quality development was fine, but we were hampered by poor quality development. And a good local plan, once it comes in force, will really protect everyone in Sheffield for that. So I think it's something we shall be, all be grateful for. I'm just going to point out that it was years and years when the plan stalled and it was only from 2021, coincidentally, when the Greens came to the administration the first time, that progress was made. But actually a serious point there is that I want to give credit to, the officers who've worked on it. All the people in the public and, you know, with all the interest groups across the board who've contributed to it. And also the councillors who've been involved in the working group from all three parties. And there's been a lot of really good work that goes into that. Result is that there's lots of things in there that I don't personally agree with, but that's to be expected. And this is where we can all show a degree of compromise, that the basics of this are a good local plan. So I'll support, recommend that we take this to full council and then recommend there that it's taken forward to submit to the planning inspector. I'm just going to make a couple of points on the two items of contentiousness that, what we've heard today. In the issue about providing for gypsies and travellers, I think it's all important for us to recognise that whilst there are legitimate concerns from anyone who might be expecting development on their doorstep, that is the nature of the planning process and it's not only the local residents who are the only interested people in this, in this issue. Planning process is always about balancing the needs of different groups of people. So we also have to balance up the needs of people who might occupy that site at any particular point. It's a changing group of people, but also the residents of other parts of the city. And given that we've got very clear advice that if the site weren't here, it would have to be elsewhere. And the advice we're receiving is this is the best location out of all the possible sites where the impact on other residents would be greater. So I think that's a convincing argument in favour of accepting the advice that we've been given professionally on that point. And especially in the context of what we just discussed earlier on about the need to get on with being anti-racist city. And I'm just going to say, of course, you know, gypsies do and have for centuries suffered persecution. And, you know, there is a reason that we have a legal requirement to provide safe sites for gypsies and travellers. The final point is on hot food takeaways, I'm just going to raise it now because it has been raised as a possible objection to the plan. And I'm just going to say that it is really pleasing to see that the draft local plan includes provision that it was really an equalities issue because actually we know that in terms of health crisis, there are a large number and growing number of people with obesity problems, especially from the age of early years and upwards. And they are not evenly distributed across the city, they are concentrated in certain areas. It's a good use of our powers as an authority to tackle something proactively. And, you know, support the work that's gone into that. In terms of the objection that councillor Otten kindly shared with us, I was looking at last night and I have to say, you know, I am not persuaded, most of the undergrounds is just complete nonsense, it makes no sense whatsoever. But the short answer are, first of all, I prefer the advice of the director of public health and his team and the field of public health professionals against him to councillor Otten. And secondly, on the equality side, I set out the reasons why this is an equalities issue, but it's not the equality issue that councillor Otten has suggested. Where if you want to make those sort of arguments, you do have to at least quote the Act right if you're going to refer to it. And also give it the correct name of the Act of Parliament you refer to. I said it's nonsense, happy with those things, I'm happy to support the recommendations as they are set on paper.
Okay, thank you councillor Johnson. But councillor Bellbin and then councillor Miskell and then councillor Mohammed, councillor Bellbin.
Thank you. Given the representations from members of the public today and, you know, I'm very mindful obviously that we have had a consultation that lots of people have responded to, I just wanted to ask a few questions really, related to the response to them. First of all, the paper talks about the transport strategy which might resolve some of the issues around the transport issues in the area and that being in mid 2024. I'm just wondering how all this aligns in terms of the dates we have here when things will go through. It does sound as if there might be the possibility of resolving those traffic issues along the right kind of timeline. And I suppose that's what I'm trying to understand a little bit better here. I can see you looking at, another officer, I appreciate this isn't your area, I can see you looking at another officer over there and it might be useful to hear a little bit from Tom on how that all might align, that this might be resolved. Having Googled topic papers, it looks to me as if these are really quite common when people are submitting their local plans. Indeed that other councils seem to have submitted quite a lot of these. So, and I wonder if that's something that, not only around this issue, but some of the issues that are raised within the paper, is that something you were thinking about doing anyway in terms of perhaps responding, you know, on things like blue and green infrastructure and perhaps some of the issues that councillor Johnson doesn't like inside the existing plan? I just think the more information that we have to work on and perhaps just what kind of weight will inspectors give to those papers? I think it would be useful to understand that a little bit better. I do agree with councillor Johnson that, you know, we should, we need to be progressing this. I appreciate that one more year might not seem like a big deal, but I think it is. It really does have an impact on how we attract investment into the city. It has an impact on where we're building housing within the city and, you know, there is a great opportunity here to get the plan through and to really make a difference to having a proper plan in place that will make an awful lot of improvements to how we go forward as a council and realise some of our ambitions as a city. But I would like to understand a little bit better just how some of the local objections can be managed perhaps through the existing processes. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Miskell.
Chair, as councillor Bellbin has said, I think it's also important to support your suggestion of a topic paper on the issues raised by some residents in the south east of the city. Having been out to Eckington Way, I think it's only right that the independent inspector takes on board the views of residents and pays them proper due regard. And I'm pleased that the head of planning has confirmed that this will be something that's likely to take place in order to recognise those views. I think it's probably important to say, as planning falls within the oversight of my committee, it's important that I thank officers, councillor, colleagues and most importantly citizens of the city for their views and work that's got us up to this point. Having a local plan will help us as a city to be in charge of our own destiny. And there's some amazing things that are happening now, including the regeneration that we see in the heart of the city, Castle Gate, Westbar, Attair Cliff and Stopbridge, as well as exciting plans for our investment zones to bring jobs and economic growth and regeneration to Sheffield. And of course, the local plan underpins all of those developments, helping us to attract investors and keep investment in Sheffield, as well as setting those high environmental standards that we all know that we need for homes in this city. It's quite clearly been a huge piece of work and spans the leadership of many different councillors and officers. Over the past few months since taking up the post of TRC Chair, there's been a cross-party working group to develop the draft plan. I'd appreciate some clarity from officers about whether this has been the spirit that the plan has been developed in over the years. I think it's also important to note councillor Otten's crusade to support fast food takeaways next to our schools, which councillor Johnson has also highlighted. Of course, I have the fullest respects for Joe, but I do think that it's out of touch with both the views of people in this city and the obesity crisis that we face. Fast food takeaways in the vicinity of our schools, and I know this as a teacher, harm the young people that we serve in this city and disproportionately harm young people from some of the poorest communities in our city. And of course, it's right that the local plan takes pragmatic action to right that the local plan takes pragmatic action to protect young people and is led by public health arguments and not ideological dogma.
Thank you. Okay, I've got three more councillors who want to come in. But perhaps before I bring them in, I don't know if there's any points you want to pick up to respond on anything, which may help to address any further questions as well.
Chair, thank you. Yeah, I'll start with topic papers. Topic papers, they they are used relatively regularly to help explain exceptional issues in the plan. And in essence, they're there to help an examiner who receives a huge amount of information just understand the background without having to search too much and come back to the local authority with too many questions around how these key issues that have developed through what is a two or three-year process have got to the point that they've got to within the plan that's been submitted. So that's the purpose of topic papers. The weight they carry really is is dependent on the weight of the issue in many ways. So they're just a piece of information to help inform the issue. And obviously, the production of a topic paper would point towards the issue being a significant one in any case that needs to carry weight. In terms of the transport strategy, and Tom might, Tom might come in as well, depending on how well I do here. So there is already a transport strategy at city region level, at Simca level, and there's a there's a transport strategy from 2019 for Sheffield. The local plan promotes the the aspirations in those transport strategies. There's a recognition through Transport for North and from Simca and from the local authority that there's a need for a refresh, there's a need to review how we sort of promote and move forward around issues like modal shift. The local plan in its sort of more strategic sense is there to help drive those changes forward and recognise some of the schemes that are in the existing transport strategy, some of the schemes that have emerged since, and recognise the need to support any updated transport strategy that comes forward. In terms of sort of project-level information, the 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 issues, and let's focus on Eckington Way for a minute, the issues that we're describing around that site, as Simon touched on in in his presentation, we don't make light of the traffic issues in that area. What we're simply saying is the the Eckington Way site in isolation, the traffic volume we expect to come out of that site, we don't see having a capacity impact on nearby junctions relative to where that site is, for that site to have to provide mitigation through through its planning application in in reality, in terms of how you would secure that. What we are saying, though, is that as part of the emerging transport strategy, and not just in the Crystal Peaks area, but in different parts of the city, we know that there are existing transport issues that need to be tackled, some of which will have been picked up in the 2019 strategy, some of which wouldn't have. Some of the solutions in the 2019 strategy actually might not feel like comfortable solutions now, as we move further and further towards climate emergency and declarations, et cetera, et cetera. So what we're saying is that the the refresh of the transport strategy for for 20, next summer, will start to look at how the city chooses to tackle some of these existing problems. Now, those documents and how they progress, whilst the timing of them might might align, or it might slightly misalign, the way the local plan is drawn means that the local plan will always support the transport strategy that's in play for the city. The working group I'll pass to Simon to answer, if that's okay, Si.
Yeah, I mean, the the working group has been very effective, really, over the over the last 18 months since it was established, really to following the cooperative executive decision on on the the overall spatial approach. So the group has met regularly since then, and it's been very constructive as a way of dealing with dealing with issues on the plan.
Chair, I would just add, just from my role as well, just, and I know we've got a long way to go with this, but just my thanks. And and we couldn't really speak more highly as officers about the the conduct, the input, the advice that all different members through that working group have given us over the last two and a half years. So just to put that on record as well.
Thank you. I've got five councillors who have indicated to speak. Councillor Mohammed, councillor Nas, councillor Otton, councillor Dale, councillor Smith. Is that everybody who would like to speak? Okay, in which case, I will take those five, and then we'll come back to you. So councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, and thank you for your work, and particularly bringing this plan forward. I mean, I share Douglas's frustration. For many years, I would have my briefings with the then chief exec to say, where are we with the local plan? And a number of times, the response came back, it's on the leader's desk to be signed off. This is not two or three years ago. This is five, six, seven years ago. So the fact that we've not had a plan is not because of the offices. Clearly, residents have expressed their concerns. We've tried to reflect those with an amendment, which we sent to yourselves. And clearly, you've come back to us to say it's a major amendment, not a minor one. As a result, it's not something we can table today. And that creates some difficulties for us. I was under the impression that today we won't have any surprises. I think councillor Johnson's reaction and mine were simultaneously there as in terms of these additional papers. I don't, not sure how, whether that provides any comfort to you at all, Fiona, you know, in the sense. So my question is, how many people would have to respond and object to something before this council would actually say, yeah, that's a significant issue that we now need to look at and go away? Because you've had 4,000 odd signatures to petitions and questions and comments, and you've come back to say we're still going to carry on. So what would require you to change your tack?
Thank you. Councillor Nas.
I do have comments as well, but do you want to take those now, or?
Please carry on.
Later on. So clearly, you know, I want this plan to work for the city of Sheffield, and I want it adopted as soon as possible. But I also don't want it to be pushed through when there's such a significance at voices against it. And, you know, I welcome the fact that a plan would help us protect the Green Belt, et cetera. And we've always been strong advocates for that. But I am very concerned that we seem to not be taking on board concerns that have been expressed by members of the public. And it doesn't board well for future consultations if 4,000 odd people, you know, and I have that experience of the tree campaign, where we had 16,000 name signatures for Ruslan's Road, where I'm a councillor, and that was ignored. So the issue for me is, are we learning any lessons here, or are we just, as we were, carry on? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Nas.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I think it's important that as a council, we meet the needs of all other communities. We need to build more affordable homes and stop inappropriate development. This morning, we had a finance committee briefing on the capital strategy, and we were told that central civil couldn't really be allocated until the local plan was implemented. But one of my questions is, once this plan is is put forward, is produced, will there be public hearings? So if there are, like today's, the lady who came earlier spoke about the south-east, will there be another opportunity for people to have their say in public hearings?
Thank you. Councillor Otton.
Thank you, Chair. Before I get on to the main main point on hot food takeaways, I just want to echo Shavak's comments about the proposal, Tom, your proposal, you know, of a of a topic paper. I'd be grateful for some clarification of how that would work, because my understanding is that the the planning inspector must consider all these consultation comments anyway. And so a further paper saying, please particularly consider these ones, potentially isn't isn't adding very much. And when officers elaborated on the offer, it sounded like an explanation of why the consultation comments were wrong, rather than, you know, a request to consider them more carefully. So, you know, I wouldn't support, I wouldn't support that. So I'd be grateful for that. So coming to coming to the hot food takeaways issue, just firstly, to respond to councillor Johnson on the equalities point. It isn't for us to say which equalities issues we think something is. We have a duty to consider all of the equalities issues under the Equalities Act. And so I have raised the issue of the loss of employment and business opportunities to ethnic minority Sheffielders as a result of the policy on hot food takeaways. Now, you can't say we're not going to consider that because we think a different equalities issue is the relevant one. Our duty under the public sector equality duty is to consider all the issues. And I've asked, I have asked for that to be considered. To Ben, yes, crusade, nice. If the policy isn't hot food, it isn't fast food takeaway, it is hot food takeaway. It doesn't say anything about whether food is fast or not. Obviously, some hot food that you might take away might be quite good food, and, you know, the converse, converse applies. This is, this is part of the issue here, is that we're dealing with planning policy and not actual recipes. We're trying to regulate something by a very, very long, something very far removed from the actual answer to what people eat. And that's part of the reason why it is so ineffective. I'll come to the reasons for that in a moment. So it's unfortunate, because we we submitted as a as a group an amendment covering both the Eckington Way issue and hot food takeaway issue. And this was rejected on the grounds that have been explained. So we don't have an amendment before you. I am still asking, as a political, and I realise members have already made their views known, I'm still asking as a political decision that we we choose not to proceed with the ban on hot food takeaways, for reasons that I've gone into many times before, and I'm not going to repeat, and I'm not going to speak to my paper at length. But what is happening, what is also happening here is that I am challenging the legality of this policy. And I don't know if David would like to comment on this. We had a conversation this morning, which I'm grateful for. And I will briefly explain, as a strategy in my crusade, is not just to, you know, appeal to your to your good natures as politicians, but also to to seek to use the legal devices where they're available. Firstly, that the equality duty has not been considered, and it has to be considered legally for this to be a sound decision, as I've described to councillor Johnson. And secondly, that planning policies must be supported by evidence, and they must be proportionate to the aims of which should be achieved. And what what my paper does, which I have circulated, is explains why that isn't the case. And I could speak to that at great length. I could spend an hour on it now. And I hope members are grateful that I'm not going to do that, that I've instead sent it to them in advance. For the benefit of the people at home, I'm talking about a paper you haven't seen. So I have, I've put it on my Twitter and Threads accounts, joottanx, so you can find it there. I am mortified, I must say, that Twitter has been renamed X, and therefore my Twitter handle, which I've had for many years, which has an X at the end, looks like some sort of sycophancy to Elon Musk. I promise you, it isn't that. I will change it if this doesn't blow over soon enough and Twitter doesn't. But no, sorry, I digress. That 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 paper is there. And I just, I just, I won't speak to it at great length. But the 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 point is that if you go to the, if you if you are given evidence on something, it is always worth actually reading the papers you are referred to and seeing what they actually say. Because very often, you will find that they don't say what they purport to say, and they don't support the position they're being used to purport to sort. And, you know, you find this, you know, if you, any kind of public health story you see in the newspapers, it's a good example of this, or any kind of scientific story, or environmental story you see in the newspapers, you know, if you find the paper they're talking about and read it, probably eight times out of 10, you'll find it doesn't say what the journalist thought it said. And you have to, you know, you have to read the paper to find out what what the research is actually pointing out. And I'll just pick up one or two examples. And I think the best, the best piece of evidence that was offered, the best study that was done, was the Swedish one that's in reference 15 in the paper, which was a study of a million children over six years, that studied the effect of the proximity of fast food takeaway, fast food, but not hot food, fast food establishments, not just takeaways, to the home and not to the school. But it's, you know, it's close enough, it's interesting and relevant. And it didn't find an effect. It claimed that borderline significance on a couple of points, but it did a number of significance tests. And this is, I'm starting to get technical now. All I can suggest is that, you know, if a study of a million children doesn't doesn't do the job, then then you haven't got the evidence. And the rest, the rest references, you know, bear out that overall picture. One, one paper, depending on how you look to the figures, found an effect the other way, which I'm not suggesting that was, that was the case. I'm not suggesting more fast food is good, don't go and eat more fast food, children. But it reflects the 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 lack of evidence to support a ban. Please go away and 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 look at that with an open mind. And I'd ask the same of the director of public health to to take that paper and have a look at it. Douglas, in particular, I would say, I mean, you do have people who understand this stuff. I appreciate the statistical reasoning in there, which isn't for everybody. The candidate that your party stood against me, not this time, the time before, I think, is a is a, was an academic in mathematics and statistics at the university. I'm sure he would understand what I've said. So you could, you could, you could, you know, ask him what he thinks. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jo. I was prepared for lots of stuff coming up today. Elon Musk was not one of them. But thank you very much, Joottanx, if anyone wants to read all of the paper. I think I'm grateful for you not spending the the full hour, Jo. However, we are right up against the statutory time limit for this meeting. So we are just going to extend slightly, if that's okay with everybody. And I think it's not surprising, given the matters of great substance that we've been discussing today. So we will just extend the meeting. I've got councillor Dale, councillor Smith, councillor Williams, and then we'll come back to the team for responses on that. Okay, councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. I will keep this brief. I am in support of this plan. Having just gone through the sufficiency work, the officers have gone through through Education, Children and Families Committee to look at the sufficiency around school places, this plan will help us to deliver our statutory duties and enable us to develop strategies to ensure that adequate support and services are available in communities to improve the quality of life for children and reduce inequalities. It will ensure that we are able to fulfil our statutory duty to have sufficient places for children in the early years, childcare, education and training. It will ensure that we can protect our green spaces and ensure our young people have access to local recreational activities. And by having this plan, we will secure economic opportunities that will future-proof future employment for our young people. I'm going to commit it simply from the, an advocate for the young people of this city. And in that instance, I have to support this plan. Thank you.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to raise a couple of issues. First, actually, isn't connected with the local plan. If colleagues remember, at the beginning of this municipal year, we spent a lot of time talking about how to make council meetings work effectively. We talked about mutual respect. We talked about how we can behave professionally. And one of the things we all committed to, Chair, was this statement of no surprises. And yet today, we've had a massive surprise lobbed in about these topic papers. So frankly, it looks like that commitment has gone out the window, and it doesn't bode well for these meetings for the rest of the year. Going back to the local plan, and this topic paper, call me cynical, but it's a fig leaf. It's just trying to cover up something and, oh, no need, nothing to see here. It's, with respect, Chair, it is. We've heard today that the purpose of that paper is to explain to a planning inspector something that their duty bounds to consider already. And we've also heard that, and I'm quoting here, the purpose of a topic paper is to reduce the number of questions an inspector asks the council. That's a direct quote. So if that is a purpose of a topic paper, frankly, it's not surprising that councils find them really, really popular. So I'm deeply unhappy about the major surprise that was brought on this today. And I am deeply sceptical that this topic paper is anything other than a fig leaf, which does nothing to address the number of comments we've had. And let's face it, 75 to 80% of the representations that the council has received on a major exercise relates to one site. I've never seen that before. And yet, we're just saying, nothing to see here, move on. Tough. Not happy, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I'm intrigued by this concept of a topic paper, and because I have no idea this thing today, or what it would cover. I mean, would it be a suggestion to the inspector that we had 4,000 petitioners querying Eckington Way, but don't worry about them? Or would it be, we've had 4,000 petitioners querying? Or would it be, we've had 4,000 petitioners querying Ekkington Way and we'd like you to have a kind of second look at it? Either way, I don't think that puts the council in very good light. Because if it's the latter, then the inspector will just come back and say, what you're saying is, you actually haven't got a designated site for travellers and you need one, as we said earlier, your plan will be deemed unsound and it will just come back. I think it needs a rethink personally, but I don't think a topic paper really is any solution. Thank you.
Let me just address those last two comments. Far from it being a fig leaf, what I was suggesting is, could this be used to draw attention to the high level of concern that we've seen that exists in all the, you know, I think all but one of the questions that came in today were about one particular site. As you've highlighted, the vast majority of the public comments and petition signatures in particular were about one particular site. And it feels right to draw attention to that and say, if this is going to be submitted to government for inspection and, you know, let's be clear, that's a decision for full council, but if it is, then it should be properly looked at. So far from being a fig leaf and not asking questions, it seems to me as a way to actually put it right in the spotlight and say, have a proper look at this. Because clearly, the balance of opinion is such that this is something where people are very unhappy about it. So it's not an amendment to the plan, it was a way of, you know, the last 24, 48 hours, looking at all of these questions, thinking, it doesn't feel satisfactory for us to just not acknowledge this high level of concern. So that was the purpose of just asking the team today if that is something and it could even be that there's a topic paper on hot food takeaways. Maybe Joe and I can agree on that. He's nodding, excellent. So, you know, if there are papers being produced that already are drawing the examiner's attention to this, then it seems right that where there is such high, a high level of urgency and a high level of concern about one site, that it's looked at. So that was that. I will ask the team to come back and I think on some of the issues, possibly David, you want to come in as well. So I'll hand it back.
Thank you, Chair. Just starting on the public consultation, I think, just to be fair and to reflect backwards, there has been significant public consultation, looking backwards, 2020 was one of those examples that actually has really helped shape the strategic direction of the plan. So it wouldn't be fair not to sort of reflect back at the public consultation, it's actually brought us to the place we are at this point in time, particularly in relation to the spatial strategy, the decisions that ultimately members took at full council to protect the green belt relative to exceptional circumstances. So I think, you know, that is a really important part of how we've got to where we've got to and we've done that through public consultation. We've done that through member engagement as well and it's a collective we. In terms of the specific question, how many, what would be the magic number, there is no magic number. From our perspective, we obviously pay regard to a number, you know, one looks a lot different than a thousand. We can fully accept that, but we do have to look at the balance of the decision, the balance, as you do with planning decisions, the balance of the issues at play and decide whether actually the nature of those issues demand the site to be taken out or not. Now, the nature of planning is subjective and different people will come to different conclusions in relation to that and all we can do is offer you our professional views today and just reflect the fact that, and, you know, we've touched on it a few times today, the city struggled to get to this place for quite a long time because inherently, naturally, there are hard decisions to take to move plans forward and this is one of those decisions and it's not been an easy decision for officers to take either. It's been a, you know, it's been difficult balancing the different interests to move the plan to where it is. So it's only fair to sort of reflect that. The other thing I'd say in relation to that is this isn't the end of the process and, you know, I think as a council, because of the processes and the decisions we take, we get used to sitting in rooms like this and making decisions and that is the end of the process in full council. And actually, we've got to remember here that there is an independent examination that will look at all of these points, will take them all on board and decide whether the council's view, if the council's view is ultimately to support the recommendations, is the right approach to this or actually whether it's not. So it's just to reflect again that actually there is a significant piece of this process still to go, which is a full, independent examination of all of the issues. With or without a topic paper, this will be a key issue. The topic paper, we've touched on today and I probably shouldn't bore up again, but the topic paper can help explain, what you struggle to explain, I suppose, in some senses through reading all of the representations and reading what can be quite dry reports, is the balance of the decision, why officers ultimately, and the council potentially, came to the view on this particular site, that on balance, because it is always balanced, we felt the site should move forward, if the site does move forward. So that's the benefits of the topic paper, it brings the issue to life a bit more. In terms of the hot food takeaway, I'll deal with the equalities first. What I might do if it's okay, Chair, is just, in fact, this is probably the last thing to deal with, so I'll deal with the equalities issue and then I might, if it's okay. Yeah, I'll deal with the equalities issue and then I might pass over to Greg in the first instance, just to deal with the sort of the basic principles around the evidence base, because I know Greg will be familiar with that and then I'm sure he'll pass to David. In terms of equalities, councillor Otten is right, the equality impact assessment that was produced and the sustainability appraisal that was produced, the focus on this policy was a focus on health equality and actually what, there is a gap there at the moment and we acknowledge that gap and it's healthy, I think, to acknowledge that gap, that the implications for business owners or potential business owners need further consideration. So what we're proposing to do is to go away and sort of review and reflect on the equality impact assessment that already exists, which is a live, living document in any case, that allows people to pick up the things that Joe's picked up today, sorry councillor Otten's picked up today. And we will come back with an updated equality impact assessment that deals with that particular issue ahead of full council. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'll pass across to Greg.
Thanks, Michael. So just a few thoughts on the evidence base. Just by way of background, the government's very clearly recognised the role of food environment helping people make the right choices and the role of having an environment that's conducive to helping make the right choices, that's very clearly stated by government in lots and lots of different spaces. Ditto, this is, one of the evidential questions is, does this help us achieve our health and wellbeing strategy goals of reducing the gap in healthy life expectancy? Yes, probably. It certainly isn't going to harm that and it's worth saying that this was a part of the food strategy that was presented to this committee last month, I think. So we know about obesogenic environments, I won't tread that ground at all, our choices are influenced by our environment, very, very heavily conditioned by our environment. This isn't to do with personal choice, personal responsibility, it's to do with the environment in which we find ourselves. On the sort of the specific evidence, it's fair to say that there's no proven link between hot food takeaway density and obesity, there's a very clear correlation, as councillor Otten's already pointed out, correlation isn't causation, but there's a wall of evidence that points broadly in the same way. So, and I nor anyone else is claiming, not claiming this is the answer to childhood obesity, it helps. The key question is, not does it work, but does it help? And it certainly will help and I'd encourage everyone to look at the evidence base underpinning, particularly the Gateshead policy in the North East, that's been tested through public examination by the planning inspector on a number of occasions and has held it to be proportionate and robust and ours is in reasonably similar space. The purpose of the policy isn't to ban on takeaways, it restricts growth on takeaways and the primary purpose is to reduce exposure and to set a tone on the kind of environment we want to create. On evidence base in particular, as I say, I've come back to the Gateshead policy, I will come back to the point that the evidence base is complex, there's zero doubt about the fact it's complex. I've seen industry lawyers willfully misuse that evidence base on a number of occasions and it's really, really interesting to see that that evidence base gets misused, particularly on reference 15, councillor Otten, I looked it up as you were talking, I draw a different conclusion to your interpretation of that and we can perhaps debate the nuances of that later, but I draw a very different conclusion to the one that you set out. So all up, I think my advice to the council, as Director of Public Health, is, is there enough evidence base that this fits into a context and is proportionate? My advice is yes, clearly as Mike has said, that needs to be tested at the public inspection phase, but my recommendation is that yes, this is a proportionate policy, it will not solve obesity, but it will certainly help.
Just to pick up further on that, I think it's, we are satisfied from what we've seen and in line with government guidance and with advice we've got and other policies, that this is a lawful way to approach this policy. But as councillor Otten has raised specific points, I think it's only right that we reexamine that in light of that. So I will do that and I will get back to councillor Otten before this matter goes to full council.
Chair, thank you. Just to apologise to councillor Nas, there was a question about public hearings, that as part of the public examination, there are public hearings, so the examiner will look at the key issues and come to a view whether she or he determines that an issue is so important that it demands a public hearing. It may well be Ekkington Way is determined to be one of those and the examiner decides a formal public hearing is needed to cover that issue as well as other issues in the plan. So yes, there are further public hearings that are carried out by the examiner as part of the public, as part of the examination.
Okay. Thank you very much, Eamonn. Right, so we have some recommendations in the report before us, which broadly are about accepting the minor amendments and choosing to send this report with our endorsement to full council next month. Are people happy to support that recommendation? Okay. Do we need to have a show of hands, have a vote on this? Can I see those councillors who are happy to endorse the recommendations in the report? Those councillors who are against? Okay. Thank you. And then, as everyone says, no abstentions. Okay, so that report is endorsed. Thank you. Okay. The final item on the agenda for today is about Future Sheffield and Claire is just going to present this.
I shall be brief, recognising we've had a long session. The paper in front of you is a fairly straightforward proposal to establish a member oversight board for Future Sheffield, which is our organisational development improvement transformation plan. Given the scope of our ambitions and some of the conversations we've had today, I think it will be fair to say that whilst the proposal in front of you is straightforward, the programme itself is complex and wide-ranging and ambitious, so it's really important that oversight is there to offer assurance. Just by way of a very quick background and for people watching today, I just wanted to give a bit of a context to what Future Sheffield is before you consider the paper. So as I've said, it's our programme for change, for organisational development and it's something that I think we're all committed to seeing, all stakeholders across the piece. It looks at culture and process and it's about serving our residents better. Phase one is already underway, reaching its end and that was the senior management restructure and some additional work in various areas in the corporate centre, so things like redesigning IT following our in-source from Capita. And there's a few senior appointments remaining as part of that. The next phases of Future Sheffield are very much based around those corporate building blocks, what some people call getting the boring basics right. They're not that boring because they'll be coming to your agenda sometime soon, but they cover things like some of the outcomes that we talked about earlier in the Rate and Quality Commission, the recommendations from the Low Corp Inquiry, the peer review that we've had undertaken. It's also important to recognise that we have a 23/24 delivery plan and we're continuing to focus on that. So the second phase is underway and the products and outputs will be forthcoming and as I said, I think that will be populating the agenda of Strategy and Resources Committee in the third and fourth quarters of this year. And they include some big ticket items such as a corporate plan and a really important building block, but also some more detailed activities such as a digital strategy, again, a really important part of our transformation. The final comment that I wanted to make before any questions, it's just important to recognise that future phases of this programme then require development and this will be one of the key functions of this oversight group. And that's about two things, that's about transforming our organisation, making sure our development plans are linked into a medium-term financial strategy, so our transformation helps us to be better and deliver us a sustainable financial picture. And it's also about making sure that the organisation we grow, shape and develop is absolutely aligned to our strategic priorities, so that's the city goals and that's the emerging corporate plan as well. So the challenge of this in the longer term, and it's a long-term plan, is to make sure that we've got the capabilities, priorities and budgets in place to be the best organisation that we can be for Sheffield. So the board, the assurance group is to oversee that work and I think the terms of reference have been kindly set out by Joe Wright, who's the lead for this, in the document attached. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any members who want to speak on this? I see Marianne. Councillor Melvin.
Thank you, Claire. And in the interest of getting this meeting finished, I will also be brief. I think we did discuss earlier on, you know, the challenges around achieving culture change, which is what this programme is really about, really on a whole council scale and that will meet the needs of all our communities within the city. So it does seem to me vital that we have some member oversight of the programme. I think, you know, alternatives to doing it via a working group would be quite cumbersome, so I hope that members will support this way of working. And I know we did have a question raised about this at the last full council meeting in terms of member oversight as well, so I hope that by putting this working group in place, we'll be responding to those concerns, but also making sure that members feel really fully informed about what is happening in the programme.
Thank you. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I can see the benefit of this and I support it. Just a quick question, what is the process if the working group don't agree with the way things are going?
Okay, we were doing so well, Richard, we were about to finish on time. Claire, do you want to pick up?
Yeah.
Councillor Williams.
It's a good question and there will inevitably be some contentious issues on there. So I guess the answer to that is it depends on the nature of the disagreement, doesn't it? So if we're talking about service redesign and a change in the way services are delivered, there's a committee oversight and decision-making part as part of that. If we're talking about the development of a training programme that's within officer delegation, that we want some support or engagement, it might be slightly different. So the answer depends on the nature of the disagreement and the impact of this disagreement. We're talking about some fundamental piece of service redesign in the future, you know, I make a comment, customer service delivery, for example, the relevant committee will need to look at that in any change proposals. There's also an interface with the budget and the medium-term financial plan that we have to think about as well. So the really important thing with all of this is that everyone's cited on what's going on and then you see the decision-making ripple through our governance and decision-making structure.
Okay, thank you. Don't see anyone else who wants to speak, so in which case move to look at the recommendations. Are members happy to support those recommendations? I see not. Yes, okay. Thank you very much. Right, that concludes the meeting for today and an extraordinary busy run of S and R meetings, so we'll be back here in September, so have a good summer. Thank you.